Board of County Commissioners meeting is called to order. Let the record show that today is December the 18th, 2019. The time is nine o'clock a.m. I wonder if I could ask Mr. Cinderhoff if you would do the honor of leading us in the pledge of allegiance, sir?
Oh, I'll see if I can remember. [laughing] I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. I'll give that to you prior to. Madam Clerk to the Board, would you conduct the roll, please?
Commissioner Flower.
Present.
Commissioner Candor.
Here.
Commissioner Prince.
Here.
Attorney Lieutenant Smith.
Present.
And Clerk to the Board Kelly Camper.
Present. Thank you, ma'am. Audience introduction.
Jackie Bubus from the Senate.
Okay, Bob Cinderhoff.
Either one, it doesn't matter. Go ahead, sir.
Your name? Oh, Michael Conlon.
Jamie Kennedy.
Amy Mundon.
Lisa Dugan.
Ms. Dugan.
Good morning.
Welcome. Nice to have you guys here. Cold out your way?
Absolutely.
Yeah. That's right.
Hold on one second.
Yes, ma'am.
I didn't get your name. Jamie Kennedy.
Jamie Kennedy. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, ma'am. Amendments to the agenda, gentlemen?
None here.
I have none, sir.
I've got a couple. I would like to strike the last agenda item today. I did not receive that invoice from Warfino County, so I'd like to strike that and postpone it until December 31st.
Why did I think I read something about this invoice?
I sent you out a note about that. I was working on trying to get an invoice from them.
Amount was much of the way we had budgeted.
Yep. So they will handle these individually this morning. I would move we strike consideration of the 2019 weed manager service invoice.
I'll second it.
Remove the seconded discussion. Hearing none, proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posnay. Motion carries. We will delete that bad boy. I don't know why I can't strike through, but... And then I would... I think probably like to strike the discussion of the landfill manager hiring process. We've got a call in to Rusty, but we had to leave a message. Couldn't get a hold of him. So if he does come, maybe we ought to leave it on here, and if he does show up, we can go ahead and deal with it.
If we have got time.
If not, then maybe we can just postpone it when we get to that agenda item.
Once you put it to... You want to put it at the bottom?
Um, we could... Or if he's not here and he does get the message and calls Karen and says, yeah, that's fine, just postpone it, and when we get to that item, we'll just share with entertain a motion to postpone. Go ahead, sir.
Did Mr. Christensen give us a date certain on what he will retire?
No. No. That was one of the things we were going to talk about, too.
Okay, that's fine. I was just curious if we were under any time constraints.
No.
Okay, I'm fine. I'm fine.
Okay. And then the other thing I would ask, gentlemen, that because of the circumstances of today and another commitment at noon, that we place some time restrictions. I had earmarked three agenda items that I would like... I would move to put a 10-minute time restriction on the following agenda items: consideration of the corner of early roads, consideration of water line replacement, and discussion of the fire engine at Blizzardine. And with all due respect, I know that's why you guys are here. It's... I'm not attempting to get a gag order. We just cannot get into a 30, 40-minute conversation.
One of those, we're just waiting for your report.
Okay.
So that's... We're here to listen.
Doesn't matter how already we are, huh?
Yeah, it's on you.
And then the fourth one was consideration of the sickmank. I just would like to keep those very clear, concise, and as much to the point as possible this morning. So that's my motion of those four.
I'll see.
10 minutes each.
Second.
Moving to second to add 10-minute time limit to those four agenda items discussion. Hearing none, proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posnay. Motion carries. Thank you. That's all I had for agenda amendments. So if there's nothing else, we'll move on. Approval of the minutes?
I move we approve November's minutes, November 27, December 5, December 6.
Moving to second to approve the minutes from November the 27th, December the 5th, and December the 6th. We've had an opportunity to look at those. Is there any discussion?
No, they were good.
Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posnay. Motion carries. Those minutes have been...
I did.
Approved. Thank you, ma'am. Other items. Commissioner Candor, would you like to begin, sir?
Chair will make it short and sweet. Since our last meeting, a major thing that occurred, two of them, is I had a discussion with Tim Conklin on options that they're looking at for expanding broadband far enough to get to McKenzie Corner and connect everybody up. We're going to have a meeting at... You ought to have that. I haven't seen it yet, but he's putting out a meet-me number to discuss it with everybody for Friday, and I think it was around 11:00. But I'll verify that to discuss that. And look at different options for... He is applying for a broadband grant. And we also are working, as you know, the joint effort on the fiber band as well, broadband for the community, the two towns and us, so there might be something there we can work in common. And speaking of that, we had Sally Clark here. It was a great meeting, I thought. A lot of good discussion and a lot of neat things we learned about USDA's programs, including low-income housing help and other things. Jay, you got a couple of items to talk about that? Meeting on other options that were there besides broadband stuff. But it was a good meeting. And then I will not be here tomorrow, so I'm not going to be at the airport board meeting tomorrow. Will miss that. And I did talk to... I was saying it out loud, actually. We need to get the hay bale rolled out on the side of the hill, and that's one of the things we're trying to get done before Christmas. We'll see if we can get it done. And then a few things to just discuss with citizens, different items, and talking, getting ready for Christmas. So it worked out fine. A little work with Gary, I, too. That's all I got right now.
All right. Mr. Jay?
Thanks, sir. Since last meeting, I attended the tourism board meeting on the 10th, and then that afternoon, I met with the EMS ambulance meeting. I was invited to join their committee. I'm going to report separately on what came out of that. I'll report my meetings first. And then on the 12th, of course, I attended Sally Clark meeting. I... On the 13th, I attended the Beckwith Ranch meeting here. And yesterday, I met with West Cliff in their planning meeting, planning and zoning meeting, discussing short-term rentals they're getting interested in looking at if they want to do something with those. I told them that was on our radar also, and that we have had done nothing about it at this point, but it probably will be a discussion item sometime in 2020 for the commissioners to discuss. And I have three things I'd like to just report quickly. That ambulance meeting, very, very productive. It was just Janie and I, Lisa Drew, and two EMS personnel were at this meeting. We talked about what are we going to do about ambulance service outside of the hospital district. We both agree that neither of us, Janie nor I, have the authority to make any decisions without our board approval, but this is what we decided we would like to do. In the early part of January, once the holiday season calms down a little bit, we'd like to have a meeting in Wetmore. Invite the entire community of Wetmore to come to this meeting without reach and without AMR, just commissioners, the hospital, and the ambulance service, and lay out in front of the folks what the issue is and ask them how they would like to solve this. We talked at great length about the letter that we wrote, that we feel that the county and the hospital district both have the same mandate by statute in terms of who has authority. Up in the air, both have the responsibility. Told them that at the moment, I have felt that the $3,500 a quarter was off the table until we had further discussion, considering what was found by Cleveland, by Clint. And they were fine. And I'll tell you, I was very impressed. Here's what Janie is bringing to their board, and their board is meeting tomorrow, or maybe today, within the next day or so. She agreed that they would continue to provide ambulance service on a first-call basis to folks outside of Custer County... Excuse me, outside of the hospital district, sorry.
Who's she? Janie?
Janie.
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 J.A.N.N.
Janie.
Janie. Okay, I'm sorry. So... But she said she will bring to her board the recommendation that they would continue at no cost to the county or to the individuals in Wetmore ambulance service that they were going to do away with the January 10th deadline. This is her recommendation of board that is not approved by her. As long as we, the Wetmore, the commissioners, and the hospital district, were working towards an amicable solution. We both felt that probably we need to get buy-in by the Wetmore... And I say Wetmore, I'm talking about all the folks east of the hospital district who are not part of the hospital district. Buy in from them and have them come up with some solution and may help resolve this issue on how to pay for it until such time as the item could come onto a vote by the people down there.
That would be 2020 election.
I'm sorry, sir.
That's the 2020 election?
Yes. Yes, it would be... A special election really didn't make a whole lot of sense, cost more than the cost of the ambulance service for the whole year. I was very impressed with Janie when she just said, look, I'll tell you, I'm going to ask my board to just approve or continue, no cost to anybody. While we worked on the solution, I said, that is the right spirit. So hopefully, her board will approve that. So I just wanted to report to you, I told her that I didn't feel I really needed board approval to have a meeting down in Wetmore, but I was not at liberty to make that final determination without approval or concurrence with my commissioner, the fellow commissioners. So is that anything you have an issue with, the plan going down to Wetmore?
It's an agenda item. That's all we got to put it on there, right?
Well, probably be a workshop.
It'll be a workshop.
Workshop, right.
It'll be a workshop, and we're going to discuss... Really, the thought was Wetmore really needs to step up, and if you want the service, you need to kind of help work this through. And let's just see what they come up with the votes down.
You got a...
And I call Wetmore, but I'm really talking about the whole Eastern District.
You got a date in mind, and you said middle of August or July.
We have not. I didn't want to do anything... I didn't want to make any decisions or do anything without concurrence by my fellow commissioners. So that's kind of the working plan, unless you tell me otherwise, I'm going to follow up with that and go to Janie. Thank you. Go to Janie and say...
For some dates.
We are on board with this concept, and let's pick a date that we can get committees together and all group together and go down to Wetmore and have a... I called it a town hall meeting, but it's really a workshop to discuss how do we want to handle 2020 for ambulance service. So...
Yeah, I'm on board with that.
Okay. We're okay? All right, I'll move forward with that. I really just want to compliment the ambulance service in the hospital. They were... There was not any issues at all. They were really stepping up. There's one other issue I do want to bring up. I asked for copies of this, and I have not received it. Ms. Drew, Lisa Drew, stated that I brought up the letter stating that I felt you have the obligation to provide ambulance service at no cost. Whether you agree to voluntarily or not, we have an agreement in place. And Janie said, we understand that there is that out there, that letter, that agreement out there. According to Lisa Drew, there is further agreements beyond that that refer directly to that agreement. I said, I am unaware of that. I believe none of the other commissioners are aware of it. Please share with me whatever you have. If there's new light on this subject, we certainly need to know. And she told me she would email that to me, and I'm still waiting for it. I'll follow up with her. Okay.
Could you forward that to us if you get it?
Of course. Okay. Item number two that I'd like to bring up is I received an email from Desiree over at Sylvista. Sylvista is going to seek funds through House Bill 19-1287, and she is asking for a letter of support from the commissioners stating that we feel that... And I have a copy of her draft, suggested draft letter, asking us to support Sylvista in their efforts to try and get funding through the House Bill 19-1287. This similar letter is going out to the sheriff and others. My response to her was that we have... The commissioner has done this before. I see no reason why we would not do this, but I could not approve it without authorization from the fellow commissioners. She has a deadline of the 20th, so if both of you are... If you agree to this... I sent it to Karen where she could kind of fill in the blanks. If we could... If you approve, if we can get this done and back to Ms. Desiree.
So they have to apply for the... Is it a grant?
It's state funding. I'm not sure it's a grant. I didn't go to House Bill 19-1287 to see specifically what it says. I didn't read it. But it is funding through the state to help Sylvista for mental health and that type of stuff.
Doesn't bind us to...
It binds, counting to nothing other than that we support Sylvista, and we're friends with them.
Sure.
So I didn't... I thought it was probably not a no issue. I just didn't feel comfortable authorizing without concurrence.
Okay, thank you. Chair would entertain a motion to the effect?
So I'll go ahead and move that we approve the support of Sylvista through using her letter as the framework for a letter that we will... Chairman will sign stating that the B.O.C.C. supports Sylvista in obtaining funding.
Moving to second to approve authorized writing a letter on behalf of Sylvista, help for their funding for residential withdrawal management unit in Chaffey County. Further discussion, and you have this parallel.
I have the letter, yes, sir.
So we can work on it. I'll get the language right, if that's all right. We'll stick it on some letterhead. Does she want it back, or do we need to send it?
That's an excellent question.
Do we have to send it separately?
Okay. And if you'll let Karen know of that information.
Further discussion, gentlemen. Hearing none, proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posnay. Motion carries. Thank you, Karen, for helping us out. Anything else, sir?
I have one other thing. I'm not sure it really is appropriate at this point, but I have on my list of six discusses. Cheryl Trent contract, is that something we're going to do separately, or is that something we want to do?
Something we need to do separately.
Yeah, that probably needs to be an agenda item.
Yeah, we need to do that later.
I would think that would make sense also.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm done.
All right, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. I don't know a lot to report. I have a couple of things that I think are paramount concern, in that I certainly contributed heavily to a recent raffle. Feel like I kind of got hosed on.
Great raffle.
Oh, Commissioner Candor believed it.
I love that raffle.
Because he won a rifle at the Central Republican Christmas Party up at the Alpine on the 8th of December. We had our drawing up there, and all we done, Commissioner Candor didn't get drawn out of the hat. Of course, he told me he spent $8,000.
GOP really benefited.
That's right. That's right. So anyway, congratulations. That was fun to have somebody local win it and then have somebody sitting right there.
Somebody that never has won anything before.
Yeah. So I thought that was kind of fun.
It was pretty neat.
That was cool. Then I had some conversations with some folks. I won't get into the weeds on those, but I think at some point, we need to have a conversation with our sheriff about pay schedule over there. Since we moved the dispatch down to free calm, I know that's... Those folks have taken on some added work over there, and I just feel like we need to talk to him about that and see what... How he feels things are now after this separation. And I wanted to ask about, how long did that meeting with USDA folks last?
Couple hours.
Couple hours.
And they had a... They stayed for lunch. I couldn't do lunch because of the hospital stuff I had to attend to, but I understand that well.
And I haven't seen anything from that, or there's some notes or...
Yeah, I got a... What we got is all the addresses of the people that attended, which was a good turnout, and a schedule of their actual presentation. We've got a soft copy of that to discuss. They... What we plan to do with that is two things. One is to come back and have them... There's a lot of other programs that are available that were really interesting, that scratches a lot of other itches. We had two purposes. It wasn't just all the fiber broadband stuff. It was to show the good things that USDA has to support small communities, rural communities.
Can I jump in? I agree with that. She spent as much time on money that they have for attainable housing, affordable housing, and multiple programs. So I think it's a... She and her staff look to be an excellent resource for us to get funding for many of the projects that we're thinking about. So we need to put them on the radar. Dole is, you know, is certainly good, but they're certainly another source of revenue, and I think we need to start working with them closely. I spent a long time talking to her. She's very into very small communities like ours.
Right, and we fit the ticket for her in a lot of areas, so she's excited about that.
So there were reps from Silver Cliff, West Cliff?
All of them. Couple trustees each, and...
The mayors were here.
Mayors were all here. And Paul couldn't go to the lunch, but Steve did, I believe, and a couple of their trustees. The other thing was the ops... Her ops person is based out of Phoenix for the whole district. And so he's going to come up, and we're going to have a little discussion with him on the process. Part of it is obtaining funding, and also, if you... According to our IGA, part of the things that Carmel's group is doing is looking at all sources of revenue, including the Department of Transportation. So pretty good start. Going to kick off. It's going to be well. And we have until March, end of March, to meet the first gate for the grant with her.
And you mentioned Carmel. I'm assuming they've executed that contract?
And they were here, yes.
Oh, they were here as well.
They were here as well, and they have executed it, and they're actually putting their head down already, working with C.DOT and the... Oh, and Amy Mund, who is her... I'm not sure what she is. They call her POI. I don't know what she was.
I think she's her administrative-type assistant. I think she does the majority of the work.
Legwork. Yep, she really does. So she put Carmel in touch with the director of broadband for the state of Colorado, and I can't remember her name. It's in... I'll send you if you weren't on that copy. I'll send you the introduction they did for Carmel. And Carmel actually has already made a contact with them on... And they're going to meet on the process of getting the broadband grants as well through the state of Colorado.
And you have a digital copy of the presentation again?
Yeah, I'll send that. I'll actually... What I probably ought to do is just make a... I'll make a hard drive, and we'll... Or you can just... We'll just plug it in. I'll give it to each of you. Good presentation. And she took a picture of us. She showed pictures on her presentation of all the help she's done to rural communities, and they all are standing in front of their courthouse or their signs. And so we stood, Jay and I, and the couple of mayors and the trustees stood out in front here with her in the middle. So we'll be in a future presentation of hers, I'm sure.
And then a question for you, Commissioner Candor. So CenturyLink talking about adding additional fiber and going east, is that also with CAF funds?
No, it's not CAF. It's a different grant that he's gone after, and it's with the state broadband board. And he needs... The stronger we can make this, you know, with the big... We have a strategic plan that has broadband in it. We've got a process where we're going to work together with all three communities. Maybe there's an opportunity to help as he's writing that grant from a CenturyLink point. It's not us involved. It's... He's got... He's going after it as a company with company funds, and it requires a match as well, or a grant of matching cash. And they don't mind matching the cash if they can get some help in other sources to help offset that a little bit, then CenturyLink will reach out and spend quite good money.
Yeah, I think he was talking about $200,000.
Right.
The grant match.
Of course, he knows we haven't got two cents to run together.
Look.
We've got a process. So I'm encouraged about it. We'll see how they go. It's... I forget how many miles that is from that corner, but it's like 10, I think.
Good. The other thing I wanted to report was we did finish the installation of the lights in the parking lot on the east side of courthouse.
No way! Are you happy, finally? Are you going to stay late?
No.
Okay.
Just say Merry Christmas.
Yeah. Now that we got them, she probably will never stay late ever again.
Yeah.
I've been out of town, so I have not seen those at night. I should have drove down the street.
That's a treat.
But yeah, I really am excited about those. They're very low-profile LED light. They don't have those big, bulky aluminum hoods on them, so we shouldn't be susceptible to wind damages we have been in the past, so... And then just a quick update on the DHS project. I know you were very complimentary last meeting, Commissioner Prince, and I appreciate that. We've just got to trim out the door on both sides, and then I think we'll be finishing that. That project will be wrapped up. I think those ladies in DHS are pretty happy with how that whole flow is going down there, so... And then also, wanted to just update you. I did instruct Vernon, the IT director, to go ahead and order the equipment to mic up this room, as well as the computer, all the equipment that was listed on that SIP, State Wide Internet Portal Authority Grant. So I haven't talked to him today, but that's... He said he would get that stuff ordered, and he would start working on it.
He told me he had his order to write.
Okay, good. So I think that's all I have, really. I just... I got back early this morning from Nashville, had a great trip down there. Actually, attended a five-day class, so it was a six-day class, but I had to come back early to be here this morning. So interesting... Interesting, interesting city, Nashville. I've never been there before, so. Steve, I don't know if you're familiar with the Gaylord Hotel in Nashville, 2,800 motel rooms, big convention conference center and we were there four days and walked in another door and got into another part of the hotel. We didn't even recognize it, didn't even know it existed and so it, it's amazing, amazing place, but, okay, we will move on then. I don't have anything to report for Upper Ark.
I'm waiting, as I mentioned before, Terry Skanga is going to set up a blue line committee meeting as soon as they gather after the first of the year.
Yeah, it's going to be with our representatives.
Okay, Admin Assistant. Yes, sir.
With the Upper Arkansas Ward Conservancy District report, I'd like to make a, have a, I have a question and comment, if I may?
You may, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. You know, some time ago, as you recall, Mr. Chairman, we had the meeting over at the-
Ranchers, yeah, Ranchers.
And the comment that was made by you that you were going to be looking into and possibly starting a water augmentation plan, the county commissioners. Has anything been done on that so far?
I don't remember that comment directly. My initial response this morning would be, I don't think that's on the county commissioners' radar. I may be speaking out of turn here. I don't remember, but no, nothing's been-
Yeah, because the discussion did go on and you were leading the discussion.
I was leading the discussion, correct. I don't know that I spoke to the county commissioners doing that. There was some discussion about, at that point, it really hadn't been revived, the Water Users Association was, was going to look into that. I know they've met a couple times, but I've not heard anything about instigating a water aug plan outside of Upper Ark, no.
Okay. Let me state the reason that I did, I am asking, because I've had people come into my office and ask if the county commissioners were going to be, you know, having their own water augmentation plan. And I said, I didn't know. And that's why I'm here today to clarify that.
Thank you for that. Again, I can, I don't want to speak for all of us and say, no, we're not doing that, but I believe general consensus would indicate that we're not leading an effort to start some water augmentation plan. That's my understanding.
Can I give, my impression of this is that the, the group here at Custer County has come up with what they feel is a alternative for them, better plan and what better is up for debate. And that is what I asked Commissioner Kanda just a minute ago. Has that been portrayed and given to the Upper Ark folks for them to review what the folk, what the Custer County group would like to see? And we've had this conversation multiple times, almost every meeting, there's a discussion as, is Upper Ark discussing the proposals that the Custer County folks make? That's as far as I'm aware of, that we have recommendations to Upper Ark to amend the plan that you have to accommodate Custer County's suggested changes. And that's the only thing I'm aware of and I had no idea, I don't remember, I'm, I'm not doubting what you said, I just don't remember that we were going to head up a, a plan of our own. I, I'm not saying it didn't, wasn't said, I just don't remember it, to be truthful with you.
I, I can foresee the, the water users of Custer County and probably eventually support from the commissioners to look at a water augmentation plan. I, I don't think we ever come out and said, we have no business having a water augmentation plan. We just weren't satisfied with the one that was presented.
Right.
But, that's all right. That's okay. So I, I concur with Commissioner Prince. I, I think there's probably discussions being had about looking at the proposed augmentation plan, changing that, but.
The only thing we're doing from my perspective is, is the water users, and at first it was the, you thought the resurrection of the old group. It, it, as it turns out, that's separate, that they're doing, there is no such thing. But we are talking, concerned water, citizens on the water have been talking on this blue line, with the blue line committee in order to, to make sure that we are either in step with what they're doing before they, we have to start spending money on lawyers to beat, you know, whatever down to help things. And so, and what, the Upper Ark has been very receptive and working with us. And in fact, that group has put together some suggestions on how to modify that plan and, and that's what we're going to meet with Terry here coming up. But that's not a county sponsored or county plan or a separate plan coming into being. It's dealing with the only one we know of right now that we, we're concerned with and that's the Upper Ark.
Okay. Go ahead. You got a comment?
You know, I, I guess my comment, you know, which I have done in this room many times over the 37 years I was on that board, is to make you aware, aware of the fact of what it may cost. And I'm not going to give you a number, but I'm going to tell you the different entities that are going to have to be, you know, involved with it. And I just jotted down a few things earlier here this morning and, you know, some of the costs are going to be, you know, if you're going to have to hire a hydrologist, a water engineer, a water attorney, water consultants. If you're going to have one or whoever in the community, they're going to have to have a water manager, they're going to have to have a staff, they're going to have to have office space, office equipment. They're going to have to take a look at their board of directors, who's going to be on it and how they're going to be appointed. But then you have a couple of other issues, big issues. One, where are you going to get the water? Okay? Where are you going to put a reservoir? Where are you going to buy the land that has the water, you know, to go into a plan? And then if that were the case, then you're going to have, whoever it is, is going to have to figure out how much that's going to cost to take through water court. And it could take three to five years, it could take a half a million dollars plus on that. But this whole thing, put together, you're going to be looking at probably in the neighborhood of three to five, or three to five million dollars. And how would, you know, locally we come up with that is a major concern of mine, okay? These are all questions that I have had people, you know, ask me, but then continuing after that, they also have to take into consideration the cost of various court cases in order to protect the water. So those are the things that I wanted to express to this board as to where I stood and some of the issues that I've worked on.
Yeah, I don't think we would disagree with anything you just said. Those are valid points. If that were to ever happen, those things would have to be part of the mix. Certainly was not an impetus from the commissioners to move forward with a county commissioner water augmentation plan.
Gentlemen, the Board of County Commissioners doesn't have any statutory authority whatsoever to get involved in the water business. It's not, your powers are enumerated, what you can do and there's nothing in there that says that, so.
But I also think it's good information for US county commissioners that people come to you or some of the various, you know, meetings that you have to attend or water users, I think you said, or any of those committees. But those are just things to think about and explore, and I wanted to express it to this board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Attorney items?
Just a few things. Last week, we closed on the purchase of the 12 lots in Silver Cliff for attainable housing. I stopped by and saw Brenda over at Central Colorado Title this morning and picked up our packet, the hard copy. I don't know if Kelly will keep this?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I need, I at least need the D.
Yeah, it's all there.
And all of that. So that's taken care of. And Charles Bogle also got a copy of everything as the chairperson of attainable housing, so that transaction is complete. Now the next step will be to figure out how we want to go forward with developing those lots and who's eligible and everything.
Yeah. And may I interject here real quick, sir, a follow up. I'm going to probably at some point recommend we have a workshop with the Affordable Housing Board and try to develop a plan moving forward. I had a meeting this morning concerning affordable workforce housing and some possible financing for that. So I just think at some time we need to get together with the Affordable Housing Board and try to determine what's the best route to go. I'm just not thrilled about this buying and selling land and calling it affordable housing. I just, I've got some concerns about that, so. I'm thrilled that we were able to purchase those lots under the umbrella of affordable housing, workforce housing, but I'll get with Mr. Bogle and see what he thinks and at some point we can just have some discussion about that. Go ahead, sir, sorry.
I had a conversation with our road boss the other day on a personnel issue. I think all of you are aware of that also, talked to him about that. Working with Jackie Hobbie, when we enter, when I say we, the planning and zoning, her acting as the code enforcement officer, we, when we don't get a response to notifying people of zoning violations or septic violations, she sometimes has to post, actually put a notice on the door and put security tape on saying that people are not to enter the premises or anything until they contact you and work it out. We had a situation where there were some traders in RVs that were parked out by a little lake, Dewise. She had them posted, everything was just moved to another location, they're sitting there, the same thing. So I prepared and this, I just did a rough thing. I do not remove this notice. She actually took it to Vernon and has this great poster laminated and it's got the county seal on it, telling people that if they do that, they're violating the law and give you subject to consequences. And so she's going to be using those. I guess finally, this, just on a personal note, my wife and I celebrated our 40th wedding anniversary on Monday. I took her to dinner at Alpine Lodge on Sunday and I, I asked her the question, I said, in those 40 years, have I, am I the only one you've been with? And she said, yes, you are the only one. All the others were nines and tens.
Only, the only one.
I was the only one. I guess that's a distinction.
It is, yeah.
That's an honor, Clint.
How good you feel about that, who knows?
At least I was in there.
Yeah, that's right, that's right. Good. And you had an opportunity to review the proposed addendum to the personnel policy concerning a sick bank?
Yes, yes, I did. Quite good to me.
So I think it's on the agenda, so maybe we can talk about that later then. Anything else?
No, it's it.
Okay. Administrative Assistant?
I'm good.
Good? Counting the hours?
Counting the hours. I like Nashville.
Well, you speak Nashville.
Yeah, I didn't really speak Nashville and I was glad to get out of Nashville last night, so.
She speaks Southern and she has all her teeth.
I get into some of those situations and I truly do believe I belong in Custer County, the traffic and, I've always kind of prided myself on the ability to tell which direction I'm looking at. Well, that didn't happen down there. Never could figure it out. I, I guess one of the, maybe one of the five largest shopping malls is with, within 500 or 600 yards of that Gaylord Hotel. You can't see it and I never did figure out what direction it was. Originally I thought we had to cross the river.
They said left or right.
Yeah, yeah.
There is no mountains to gauge yourself by.
Not going to deny it, it was our first experience with shared rides. Two major companies, Huber and Lyft, we happened to use Lyft both times and was absolutely amazed how-
Quick you can go.
User friendly that whole deal is and so. Tennessee's weird because they only have license plates on one end of their vehicle. So that's a little strange for a Colorado boy, but my wife kept going to the front of the vehicle trying to, you know, recognize which one we were supposed to get in. I got clear in one, he said, sir, I believe you're in the wrong vehicle. I said, that's not a problem, I can get out. But I told my wife, I said, they don't have license plates on the front of their vehicles down here. It's, it's fun. So you're headed out for Christmas to go-
Tomorrow night.
Back to Tennessee. Well, enjoy.
Thank you so much.
Hopefully it, maybe you can see the sunshine down there. I was for five days and never saw it, so.
That's why they call them the Smokies.
No, we're on the complete other side.
We'll move on, public comment, anything that the public would like to talk to us about that's not on the agenda, now would be a great time to do that, so. I'm assuming you're here for agenda items, so if we don't have any public comment, then any unfinished business, gentlemen, I'm not aware of?
No.
Okay, new business? We will allow public comment on our new business items. Just ask that we try to keep these things succinct and brief this morning. So the first item of business is transfer of revenues from the AT&amp;T project, from the general fund to the capital improvement fund.
So we need a motion?
I don't know. That may have got dropped through the cracks.
Yeah, I was going to say we-
Yeah, I never got any paperwork on that, so. So just a brief update, we have been collecting our revenues from the AT&amp;T lease for the, for the cell tower across the street.
Monument to cell phones we have.
And we had voted when we, it was included in the motion when we approved the motion to lease that ground to AT&amp;T that we earmarked those funds for the Justice Center construction project. And so, right now that $9,600 is sitting in the general fund and we were going to transfer that over, really a paperwork issue to get it into the capital improvement for the Justice Center. So I would move we postpone until probably the 31st, is that all right?
Yeah.
Just because to get the paperwork.
Yeah. And, and we, I never got back with you on that. I went and had a conversation with Suzie in Virginia about the whole transfer thing to get straight with that.
Right.
And, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, that conversation actually occurred when I got ready to leave, walk out the building to leave.
You were just leaving, yeah.
Is there a second to the motion to postpone?
I'll second it.
We're moving to second to postpone the first agenda item, transfer of revenue from general fund to capital improvement fund until December 31. All in favor, say aye. This is not a debatable motion, is why I'm not asking for public comment.
Okay, I'll say aye then.
Aye, motion carries. Yeah, that's the only reason I didn't ask for public comments, not debatable. Consideration of the status of the corner of Verde Roads, next item of business. I don't know that we've done a whole lot formally with that. I think we did talk with Gary when he was here during the staff report. I think the general and gentlemen jumped right in, maybe I should let one of you take the lead on that if you care to. But I think the general idea was that if any HOA was willing and motivated to bring roads up to the specs, the general idea was within reason, the county probably wouldn't have a problem maintaining those roads. But that's easy for us to say, right? Because it really puts the onus on the HOAs of investing a ton of money into bringing those roads up. I did go travel some of the roads that we talked about.
I thought I saw you out there a few or two after the meeting.
And, yeah, and I-
I wasn't spying on your-
No.
I've been on all of those.
We just passed on airport revenue.
They're tough.
I certainly understand and I don't want to say sympathize, that's a little too dramatic, but I understand your concerns out there. And it still begs the question from way back, way before I was around anyway, of, you know, what was the intent, what was the plan, what did everybody expect? I mean, I know things have changed a lot since those days, but man, I went on a couple of those roads and one of them we did talk about specifically down to an individual young couples that just bought that house and, and I just thought, I understand their concern. We could get a blade down that road, I don't know how you'd ever turn it around and get it back out.
Those cul-de-sacs.
Just brutal. So I don't, I don't know. I mean, I, maybe you guys have talked as HOAs to see, you had mentioned, hey, I don't have a problem asking them, but I know it's a lot of money, so. Go ahead, sir.
Maybe I'm, maybe I'm off base, but I was under the impression that we, the county, would not maintain private roads to private houses unless they brought it up to spec and that road actually interchanged with a county road. I mean, there was a connection to it. I mean, I have, I'm not an HOA, but if I was an HOA and my driveway is, needs a lot of work, and if I paid someone bill for example, come up and work on it, should I expect or could I expect the county to maintain it for me? And I don't think that's really appropriate personally. I think it was between, if it was to another road.
So let me throw out, I think, a correction here. You said private roads, that was never a conversation. It was county roads-
Or public roads.
Or public roads, not private driveway. That was never on the table.
We don't want you to maintain driveway. When you talked about the road to this young couple.
Yeah, it's a road, but it goes down to the cul-de-sac.
But I don't think that's a county road, is it?
Well, they're public roads. They're designated as public roads.
You're not counting that.
Yeah, it's, that's the-
That's fine. I may be- I may be off base.
It goes back legislatively quite a while. What is a county road? I think when we say county roads, I generally mean county maintained roads, because we don't own any roads. We own the right of ways for those roads, rights of way for those roads.
And we're obligated to maintain.
And have made that commitment to maintain them by putting it on our road schedule. So I say county roads, that's what I mean, is county maintained roads. I know our previous discussion did not, no part of that was a private driveway. It was public roads or county maintained or non-county maintained roads. I've got one little...
One other point that we have to make. Even if you bring it up to specs, we're not obligated to take it.
No, we would have to work with you guys and...
And it would depend on revenue, depend on the number of people, it would depend on a lot of things, whether you'd ever take it on, because you could stretch yourself so then you're not doing anything good anyway.
But I think the consensus was, we would certainly be willing to have that serious conversation about that.
We appreciate that.
So I don't know if, I guess what I would like to ask is, did you have another expectation about the road thing today?
Just one question and one request. We talked about this at the end of our conversation last month. Could we get the roads that Gary enumerated here, that he's maintaining, could we put this in the records for this meeting minute that the county agrees that currently they are maintaining these roads and these roads that he listed out are not maintained by the county, just for posterity's sake? So if this conversation, you know, because then they come back to you guys in two or three years and if we could, if we had these documented in the meeting minutes and said, "These were the roads we were talking about." Okay, well, now we want to talk about XYZ road over here. Could we do that and get that in the meeting minutes and say, "Yes, we agree that right now the county's maintaining these roads. These are unmaintained and just what you described in the future, we have those conversations."
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. I would prefer to do that with Gary here.
Absolutely, yeah.
I'm not trying to stall you on this.
I'll make sure that's the right copy.
This was his list.
I know it's his list.
Get the list from me and Mike.
And I think there was one road that wasn't on that list originally.
And there may have been, yes, yes.
And just follow up that conversation.
Make sure that we got the right one.
I would feel comfortable voting on that today without Gary being here, though.
No.
Comment, Kelly?
Yes, so during that last meeting, when we got done, I was gonna do some research and find out, because Clint, I can't remember what you said about either a resolution or whatever, when a county takes over and maintains a subdivision road, that there has to be a resolu... Was it a resolution?
It should be done by resolution. They're dedicated to the public, but the county, the commission had to do resolution to accept them for maintenance.
And so I did, I was supposed to do some research to find out if a resolution had ever been done on those roads. I did not have time, but Jackie had Laura do it and she actually did, went way back. She created a whole notebook. She did wonderful research. Found nothing on corner verdy roads.
She and I talked about this earlier this year. She could, yeah.
So I think you, I think you can do that. I just think you have to do it by resolution.
Or a lot of them. I wait to tell them to just S.O.L.
There you go.
Or we could revalidate them.
Yeah, and that's why, if we can take these roads and if you guys would agree that, yeah, we're maintaining this road, let's get a resolution, whatever. This is what we're gonna do, because we have owners who are asking, "Well, what about this road?" And I've...
Well, and you like new people coming in to understand what they're buying, isn't it?
Yeah, what's maintained, what's not, and then we all come to an agreement and say, "This is, yes, this is what's maintained, this is what's not." Good point, it's very well taken and I'm totally in favor of doing what you want, putting it on the record. And I agree, we ought to have Gary just say, "Yep, I agree," and then we could do it. But, yeah, I have no issue with what you're suggesting.
Yeah, go ahead, Bob.
I was just gonna ask a question. If they were to do that, are you gonna have a list of those roads that are maintained? Would that be in your minutes or...
Will they put it on our website?
On your website?
Yeah.
Okay, and I think that, my personal opinion is that I think that's excellent. And the reason being, I'm in the real estate business and, you know, people always tell me, "It's this road maintained." "No, it isn't." "Yes, it is." I don't know, you know? And it really helps. So I think that's an excellent...
Yeah, we've had some cases where realtors have misspoke.
Yes, and we've...
And we've been involved with their misspeak.
Absolutely. And I can tell you where a lot of that started. You had, you know, these companies that came in during those days, real estate companies, and they had people here, you know, they go home on the weekends, they have no, no idea, they tell them anything they want to hear to get the deal done.
Get the deal done, sir.
And it's not your fault. It's not your fault. You just gotta clean it up.
Yeah, I was gonna ask you that very thing of, it's really, and I thought, you know, it was great that Bob was here today, because he's on that other side of that coin and it'd be nice to be able to say, "Got a great piece of property here, but you need to understand something."
It's not, it doesn't go down.
And that something might be 10 or 12 items, but it might not be. And then I was gonna ask you too, do typically prospective landowners, do they contact you guys as an HOA?
I have been called, yes. I get calls from them. And then when the real estate agents, when they're getting ready to do the title companies, they by law have to send us a form to fill out what our dues, what all of this stuff is. So one of the things we even talked about is, once we get this maybe finalized, if somebody's buying on one of these roads, we would put a disclaimer, "You need to understand, this road is not HOA maintained and it is not county maintenance maintained."
Even though it's a public road.
And just turn it over to the buyer. You know, the buyer, the buyer beware, but, you know, try to educate people also.
Yeah, I wish I had a dollar for every time I've heard over the years, "Well, I never knew anything about an HOA." You know, so...
Oh, me too.
It is in their title commitment.
It is.
Right, yeah. And since I became commissioner, I learned that and the people that have said that, I said, "Well, I'm not gonna tell you, you don't, but it is your fault if you don't."
Go back and review your documents.
Exactly, so, okay, good. Yep, and so Gary, thanks for coming in this morning. I just, we were just having a conversation about the list of roads that the county is committed to maintain and some that weren't, that we talked about at the last time Vince and his group was here. So we're thinking that maybe on the 31st, we can revisit that list. Vince has asked if we could put a resolution or at least a record in the minutes of the current roads that are being maintained by our county.
Okay, sure.
And so I didn't want to do that without you being here. I don't think we need to do it today, but at the 31st, I think we've got it on the agenda. If you could bring that list back with you, we could do it.
We need to write a resolution that references that list or means part of it.
Because there's nothing, being anything in place right now.
Yeah, we've looked and could not find any documentation about that, so.
Yeah, I'll get that.
We'll put that on Kara's radar and then she can prod the rest of us to maybe send Clint a copy of that list and see if we can't draft up a resolution for that.
And if I could, more accolades to you guys. Thank you for, you graded Cheyenne and some of those a couple of weeks. I meant to send you an email thanking you. Thank you, guys. You guys do again plowing and everything.
Write that down, Kelly. They're thanking Gary for plowing the roads.
Yeah, they graded them.
Get that in the minutes.
And I saw, it's like you and Roger drive by one day and then a couple of days later, there was a grader, so thank you. We do appreciate what you're doing.
Okay.
That would be a good thing for a lot of the HOAs to do.
Yeah, really would. It's all about communication, public relations and say, "Man, we know you can't get to all of them, but we appreciate when you can get out here in our HOA and deal with those public roads."
Excellent. Thank you, guys.
You bet. Okay, we'll move on. I don't know if the reps from the saddle club had called asking you about a time?
They're coming in.
Oh, good, okay.
Yes, they were in the hallway.
Oh, they were, all right. Come in.
We're hiding.
Oh, well, come in, have a seat. Because, believe it or not, whoever's out there...
Don't look so happy.
Wow, yeah. The next item on the agenda, consideration of a saddle club request for funding. Are you prepared to deal with that?
Ron is on his way, but we're well informed.
Okay, we've got two agenda items here, the water line replacement as well. I don't know if the same group wanted to talk about that or not. I've been on the road, so I haven't been, had an opportunity to communicate with any of you about that, so maybe at least we can start that conversation. And you're welcome to come up if you'd like. You can certainly sit right there. And if you...
Would you like to speak, please?
If you guys would introduce yourselves too for the record, then we'll have a record.
I'm Mary Mowery. I'm the treasurer-elect for this saddle club.
M-O-W-E-R-Y.
Correct.
Tom Mowery.
M-O-W-E-R-Y. It is. Two of you showing me the same name.
How'd that happen?
Yeah.
Unless the live and go secretary lives out there.
Not PHN today. No.
I mean, in five minutes, I will be.
Okay, all right.
If I have a heart attack, you're changing.
Five minutes before it was.
Yeah. So to kind of get you right to it, let's, let's start with the water line thing and we'll wait for Ron. Hopefully, he can get here. We've had some discussions about that whole water line thing. Nothing's been really solidified, I don't think, at this point. I think it's gonna be a combined effort between the county, county's road and bridge department, fair board, saddle club. I sent an email to the president of the fair board and said, "Hey, you might brace up to help fund this project, because you are one of the end users."
In the fire department?
Fire department, correct. Yeah, sorry. So I have not communicated with the fire department about that.
Okay, they've heard through the grapevine, so.
Well, I've talked to the fire department.
Okay.
Imagine that.
Is your name Grape?
No, but when your name is, Jerry Still, the chairman of the board, when you're married to the chair, when your Mrs. Chairman of the board, I guess word gets around.
Word gets around.
Okay.
So the board, however, doesn't, this is not on their radar at all.
Okay.
So, and it depends on where we're talking about putting the line in. If we're talking about just going up behind the fair, the firehouse, up that hill, then the fire department might not really be...
Agreed.
You know, affected by it. If we're gonna go all the way to Fork and Main where the meter is, then they're gonna be greatly affected.
Yes, which this commissioner believes that needs to happen.
Yeah, because that's all old Schedule 40s, since from the 70s.
We will just compound the problem, because we're gonna take over 2,500 feet and compress it down into about 600 feet if we replace some and not all of it.
And they have to have their water, so.
Schedule 40, move south. So I think, yeah, initially, I think the... Good morning, Ron. I think the fire department really is, I mean, they're also a benefactor of that, although it's just a T into that main line, but they're still gonna be a consumer of that. And Round Mountain's indicated to me that probably things are going to change. We're out of district, we're gonna have to start paying out of district rates. We're gonna have to have meters on those lines and so everybody's gonna have to step to the plate and take a swing at that ball as well, so. We haven't had a formal conversation. I think Gary's at least aware enough to know that, that Schedule 40 water line is just not getting it and...
Well, we had a failure just recently too. I mean, that's just...
Yeah, and I, I mean, and I looked at, physically looked at the failure and it was about a three-inch slit in the line. It didn't blow off a fitting, it just failed.
Cracks the line. It's amazing it lasted long as it did.
If, would the county cut and remove the asphalt to dig a trench all the way to Fourth and Main? Is that the town of West Cliff? Is that Round Mountain? Who takes on that?
That's, I might have to get with the, with West Cliff.
That's West Cliff.
See how they would want to be.
Right.
But now, talking to them.
Yeah. And before I forget, thank you too. I'm assuming, because I was again out of town, but I got an email that said we're now back up with water at the saddle club building. I'm assuming a lot of that had to do with you and one Mr. Camper. I don't know how that transpired, because I wasn't here, but Mr. Ron took care of that. Perfect, so good. So we'll hold our fingers crossed and see until we have another failure, but...
We were able to get some good compression couplings on each end. We did abandon the one-inch T, because we thought there's no reason to have any of the...
Fair.
Yeah, the, no, the ones heading out to the parking lot.
Through the livestock.
If we're gonna be going into this and doing a permanent fit, we just go ahead and abandon that from there.
Is that where that failure occurred? Right there at that intersection? Okay, that's good enough. So currently, that's been abandoned going out to the northeast.
That is correct.
We use county equipment to do that?
Yes, we do.
Is that right? All right, thank you. Appreciate that. Yeah, I don't care how much we progress as a society, man, there is always room for people helping people. And county's certainly heavily invested in that water line, one way or the other, because it does supply the county road and bridge department with water as well, so. So I don't know where we go from here, really, with this whole water project. I've never gotten a price from Round Mountain. When I tried to get a price on water line, Dave Snyder was out of town and he was out of town when I left, so I haven't gotten back.
Don't you think that then, somebody's come to us with a proposed price and project, really, and, because...
Well...
Otherwise, we can't act on anything.
Well, we do have two proposals from two different contractors. One of them's Seifert and another one is...
Seifert.
Yeah, Seifert. We do have one other. They're in the, they're in the $35,000, $37,000 range.
Yeah, and I think the county does, I don't think it's, we can take a position, well, we'll sit back and let somebody else bring this to us, because the county literally owns almost half of that line, maybe a little over a third of that line from Fourth and Main down to the T going to...
Fire department.
Well, past that, up to road and bridge.
Up to road and bridge, I mean.
Is that hydrant there, road and bridge, and then that goes down?
Right, and then there's another about 350, 400 feet of that up to the T that T's off into your building where your office is. To me, that's county responsibility to that point and then really probably saddle club, subsequently the fair board from there on.
So what, what did they bid on?
They actually bid on about 1,300 foot of pipe total placement. And it was, and it was actually just from the hydrant T.
Right.
Oh, geez, on stuff that they don't need.
Yeah, just our...
The stand pipe, we're gonna fill the water trucks from there up...
That's correct.
To the stand pipe. Fairgrounds is 1,370 feet, so.
That's correct.
Well, it sounds like we gotta get with the town. West Cliff has an interest in it on the right away there and, uh.
And Round Mountain.
And Round Mountain. And then have somebody propose that piece of repair, how we're going to share or not.
Yeah, and then I could tell you Round Mountain will want a meter at Fourth and Main. They've made that pretty clear.
Isn't that where the meter is now?
Uh.
I just assumed that's where the meter was.
It may.
Jerry, that's what Jerry said.
Oh, okay.
There is a meter on. We know that.
Yeah, I think that's worth.
Yeah, you know what it might be because, uh, there's not a meter at the stand pipe for the water trucks, correct? So it's gotta be up there.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it's up there.
Yeah, and then.
Well, that's how we ended up with such a mess last summer.
Right.
That leak because there wasn't a meter in there, so this was.
From where I sit, there needs to be a meter in the fire department. Needs to be a meter to the saddle club and then everything else is county. And currently we're, we're using treated water. We're buying treated water out of that stand pipe, put on our roads. And Dave Snyder told me.
Have a wasted time.
I can bank on the fact that's going to change.
Is that right?
Yeah. His proposal though.
Now, Roger, thanks.
I kind of panicked right there sitting in his office. And he said, but before you panic, let me tell you what, this is Dave Snyder talking about what he thought the process should be, was to come up here to this well and convert it into water, public water sales of untreated water.
I think that's a clean idea.
Yeah, and I did too. I thought, man, there it is. That's the salvation of us having to pay, I don't know what the rates are, so I'm going to make a stab at it, but probably 10 or 12 times more for treated water than.
Yeah, we don't want to be throwing that on the road.
The treated water?
Yeah.
Not necessarily. I don't, I don't.
Not want to pay for it.
Back to reusing treated water, drinking water basically.
Yeah.
Put on the roadways.
Price of money.
Yeah, if it comes out of that stand pipe, right, that's treated.
Of course, us neighbors will drink well water no matter where it is.
So.
Yeah, if we can come up with a new treatment, get untreated water.
Right, and that's, that's what he thought. They'd pump it right out of the well and sell that bulk sales there of untreated water. So I think really Round Mountain, West Cliff, the county, uh, the fair board and the saddle club, those hitters need to sit down at a table and try to figure it out.
Gary and Ron and.
But until we get a price for pipe, if nothing else, then we sit around and go, well, we don't know because we don't have any idea about that, so, um.
Well, I do have a price from, uh, Rampart down in Twoblo for just pipe and fittings.
Okay.
So, and that's around 12,000.
Is that jointed pipe, slip jointed pipe?
Well, it's the C 900 that they use for Round Mountain.
That's what they recommended and that's where I was going to start with, but I, I just never did get a price, so. So in that realm, really, I think the pipe itself is the minor part of that project. It's going to be meters, uh.
Labor.
And, and excavation and, and paving and that kind of stuff.
Rampart, did you check with Lynn Nelson? They're not pretty competitive.
And maybe Dave, Dave could get us a price. If we work together, maybe you can buy it at a, at a good price. I don't know that, but. Thanks for that work.
Yep. Well, I know that, you know, we did get those compression fittings from Round Mountain and how they worked it out is they just had it on their shelves and then we have to reimburse for that equipment. So they're going to bill us for that.
Okay, that is 12 minutes now of time.
Yeah, so, um, and the good thing about it is that's one of the agenda items. So then let's talk about, uh, if that's okay, we'll move on. Yes, sir.
Question that I have, which well are you talking about and who owns the well?
Good point. So the well that Dave Snyder and I talked about of them maybe considering selling bulk water is this one right here across from the sheriff's department.
Who owns that well?
Round Mountain.
Round Mountain owns it.
Yeah.
And is that untreated?
Uh.
Coming out of the well?
Doesn't, doesn't go down there, does it?
They're not pumping out of that well. This bulk water they're selling now, they're piping it from their, treated water system. I don't believe, if I understood him right, they're not using that well currently. They'd like to bring it back into production to sell bulk untreated water out of. That was my understanding. Because this is potable water they're selling out of there through that meter, but I understand that's through their treated system.
Do you know what the GPM is coming out of that well?
Did not talk about that.
Something that I would suggest you.
Yeah, because there's no storage facility connected to that well.
Yeah.
It's.
And how is it adjudicated?
Yeah, yeah, it's static, whatever the static level is.
Dave probably knows on that one.
Oh, I'm sure, yeah, sure. We just didn't, we didn't quite get into those details about it. And, and he, he didn't say, we're going to do this. He said, I would like to see us move to that to get non-treated water available for bulk sales.
Yeah.
Well, I can see two things is we probably can get it for lesser cost plus it's, makes more sense to put non-treated water.
Right, yeah, yeah. So, you know, one of the big red flags is probably going to, because saddle club, the fair board, and I think the county shop is out of district for Round Mountain water and sanitation. And they've been selling water at district rates. He said that will change.
Do you know what the difference in price is?
I don't. Okay, uh, we'll move on then to, uh, the second agenda item. We jumped around because we were kind of waiting on you, Ron. Thanks for coming in. So, uh, you are up for consideration of a saddle club request. If you want to come forward, we haven't stood up and welcomed anybody yet. All right, buddy.
Good to see you.
Looking my dapper, what's going on?
Thank you, thank you. Oh, that's, that's all business. Well, the reason that I'm here is because, as you all know, now we have a professional rodeo that we're putting on in July. So we are looking for sponsorship from the county. And, you know, our, our sponsorship is really what drives our added money and stuff like that. We do have a minimum of added money now that we are a PRCA member for each of the events. We have historically been running around 20,000 for our added monies. That's for our cowboys, cowgirls, every, every event, and we wanted to stay right in within that range. And we would sure like to have the county be one of our sponsors. I would like to see a $5,000 sponsorship to our PRCA rodeo for the third weekend of July. But of course, any events that we have, um, we're going to make sure that the county is, and, and all of our other sponsors are being advertised as such.
I want to throw out a couple of things. I might ask a couple of questions, but because I'm heavily involved with this whole thing, I'm going to recuse myself from formal debate and vote if that's what it comes to. I'll handle the duties of the chair accordingly, uh, but I just want you to know that upfront, that I'm a little too deep in the weeds for this. Uh, so this added money, uh, who does that go to?
Uh, that actually goes to the winners of each of the.
Got your pot.
Right, but I mean, are we, would we be writing a check to the PRCA? Does it go to the saddle club?
It would actually come to the saddle club and be part of our added monies pot.
So being a PRC member, did that require you to pay X dues that you weren't currently planned and budgeted for?
Great question, yes. Um, we also had to join the women's pro rodeo so we could have a sanctioned event, barrel racing, which is a sanctioned event, but that is a separate, um, pro club that we had to become part of as well.
Because if you hadn't joined, you had enough money to do everything. Is that right?
Yes, yeah, we, we had that, but it, but it's always an annual thing, Bill.
Oh, I understand.
You know, we, we've got to raise the money every year through sponsorship to make sure we can do that.
So I'll ask this to the group, you as their spokesman. Do we have any business spending county money, county taxpayer money on this community event?
Well, I think that's a great question. Um, I don't know if anybody else would like to put in, but I'm going to tell you, this is one of the biggest events that we have in this county during the year. Now, we truly feel as a saddle club that we are under utilizing that facility, having only one event. So we are currently, um, as a board, sitting down and looking at some other events that we can bring to this county. But we are already working with outside advertising, if you will. We did receive a $950 grant to do some of that through the tourism board and we're going to continue to do so. Our ticketing that we're looking at, we have found a vendor that we're seriously considering that doesn't cost us as a club anything, but we can start having our advertising to bring in outside people from the county into this event. So what is the financial gain for this county? I think it's tremendous, especially if we can get our ticket vendor on board sooner rather than later, because we've got the stock show coming up here in January and we want to have cards that'll be advertising that and then also have the online ticket sales ready to go. So we can start selling tickets sooner rather than later. So as people are planning their summer vacations here in West Cliff, they know they've got an event and they're already going to have tickets.
When is the rodeo?
It's the third weekend of July.
Seventeenth and eighteenth.
So there's no, I don't think anybody would argue about the, the money that brings in. It's always been a big deal here. Parade, uh, it's all my life. It's always, it's an icon.
Right.
Are there other counties that sponsor rodeos, do you know?
You know, I do not know.
When they're Fremont County has that big rodeo too. I don't know if it's PRC and.
Yeah, I don't think it's PRC anymore. They had a, they had a monies issue there that, you know.
I know Morgan County sponsors their rodeo.
County money goes into it a little bit. Yeah, I don't think there would be a reason not to necessarily.
And, and we do have both of the cities that have sponsored as well, so I can tell you.
The other thing I'd like to add, if we, if we do go forward with this ticketing, um, company, not this year, but next year, they will track for us how many outside dollars were spent in our county during that time.
Actually, that's the PRC data itself.
Oh, that's right. That's right. You're right. I'm sorry.
So, yeah.
So that's already given. So it, we won't have that data for this year because we weren't pro before, but going forward, we'll have data on where people stay, where they, you know, spent money.
So did we give money last year?
Here in this county.
Not that I know of.
Never seen it on our.
They had a request in the conservation trust fund and they pulled it back before the December meeting.
Um, and, and I just kind of want to highlight a little bit on what Alyssa was saying. You know, the PRCA provides a service now where, you know, if you're, if you're nine and above, you've got one of these things called a smartphone, but if people are on it and they're going to draw a perimeter around our fairgrounds, so they're going to know where these people go, if they go to a restaurant, if they go to a store, if they go to a hotel, they're going to be able to track.
How much of an impact did you pick up by the fees that they charged above what you'd normally hit last year without the fees?
Well, considering it's.
More dollars or 500?
Um, Alyssa, do you know what it was to, to join the PRC?
It's going to end up being about $2,500 to join the PRC between PRC, WPRA and.
So some $2,500 burden to add more.
Extra, right.
Normal fundraising would have.
And we usually don't start our sponsorship fundraising until somewhere in May, maybe June. We, we've always kind of been behind the eight ball there. So with us spending monies a lot earlier than we are normally doing.
So where would this money come from? We hadn't budgeted for it. It would be out of outreach.
Out of outreach, yeah. It'd make the most sense.
And I wonder if, uh, we could do it in a two-step thing maybe because, uh, I don't know what, are you're in?
Uh, are you asking for, out of this year's budget, next year's budget, does it matter to you?
It doesn't matter to us.
We just have to have it for 30 days before the rodeo.
Spent next year in the, before the rodeo.
You know, with this being our first year with the PRCA, I'm going to highlight on what Alyssa was just saying. We have to have monies in escrow for our added monies 30 days prior to the event. That's, that's part of the deal because of the problems they've run into before. Fremont County was one of those situations.
So maybe a motion ought to be worded where we, I would be helped supportive of taking what we can now and allocating it to you with the.
$5,000, you've got enough in outreach if you wanted to do it. There's no sense.
No sense piecing it.
Yeah.
And get now and then, and then, you know.
Yeah, funds are, funds are available in 2019.
Yeah, and we've only got two weeks left.
I've got two legal questions. One is, what's the statutory authority for the county to be sponsoring something like this? And secondly, you consider opening the door to all the other entities that are going to come and say, well, you did it for PRC.
That's what I was going to talk to you.
Yeah, I mean, Black Dark Skies is having a big event this next summer and they say, hey, well, we could use $5,000 too.
Yeah, I think it's a legitimate question. I think we went down that road when we funded the request for the Rotary Club.
No, I think they're very different. If I may.
Sure.
Um, I think the Rotary Club is a service that we provide to the community that for people who don't have transportation or need transportation to go to hospitals and doctor visits and this kind of thing. It's a service that we're providing to anybody in the community. The rodeo, I'm really having a hard time here. I keep saying to myself, is this the proper use of taxpayer dollars? I'm having a really hard time in my heart saying yes. Now, please don't take this wrong because I really commend you what you're doing. We got this wonderful facility out there. It's used for a couple of weeks and then it sits there leaking. You go into using it and I agree with you. Every person who comes here is going to have dinner. There, many of them will stay at our hotels. I mean, the impact is huge for the county and the towns. I get all that. But I'm having a real hard time internally saying, is this the proper use of tax money to sponsor a private event, which is what I believe this is? So I, I, I'm not, I'm not opposed to this. I was going to say the same thing that Counselor just mentioned. We have many, many organizations that run many functions. If we do this one and the argument's the same, if we, Trails for All comes in and says, we want $3,000 because we're going to have a bike ride through the trails, and we go, well, how's that helping the county citizens who are paying for the 2,000 I would give them? Well, they're going to eat at my, they're going to eat at my restaurants. You know, it's a good argument, but is it the proper use of tax dollars? And that's just a question I'm leaving on the table because I don't know the answer to that. When is it and when is it not? I felt the Rotary was because it services the people within the county who need county help. Kind of like having a public health nurse. Someone needs public health and they want to go in and talk about whatever is available. But the rodeo is different, I'm thinking. And, and I'm not trying to be a naysayer. I'm just, I'm trying to be a good steward of taxpayer dollars is what I'm concerned about.
It, I agree. Actually, it's a tough call, but you look at, look at the county fair is a good example. County fair, you make events for all the citizens of the county to participate in and learn by and grow by. The rodeo is sort of a hybrid to me because county residents can still participate and they can be part of the program and use the livestock knowledge they have, blah, blah, blah. Uh, so I can see, uh, and then there's other benefits. County fairs bring money in as well. So does this rodeo. So, uh, you know, it's, and that's why probably Fremont County did sponsor it at one time or, you know, if they still do.
If I could.
Or other counties, I don't know.
I don't mean to cut you off, but the county fair is different in my opinion. We have all the kids in our community doing events. We have our four age. We have our people going in. To me, that's a perfect use of our tax dollars. A private rodeo, I'm questioning whether that's.
That's why I said it was a hybrid, because the counties can still participate.
Right, but.
You could have a high school.
Local rodeo riders, so we're going to use any local rodeo bulls on it.
Jake. Jake. High school, high schools, high schools sponsor rodeos too.
Sir?
The high schools sponsor those, uh, junior rodeo.
Isn't it high school kids that can own the bulls though?
That's right. But you say it's how you, how you put the program together. So you can, I'm, all I'm saying is you have the opportunity to do that. I'm not saying, I'm not discounting it. I just think it's a hybrid. It's different than saying, well, all right, let's go, let's get a carnival. Let's go buy rides and Ferris wheels and all that and the county can have a carnival business. You know, we wouldn't, that would be harder to sell, to me.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I have a few things to say about this. First of all, there's also a junior rodeo which we're looking at doing. It's junior PRC, um, and so we're, we're looking at working with drapers primarily, but people from Letmore, Warfino County, Fremont County to bring in this junior rodeo to, so that our kids can be involved in the rodeo. Second part is we do have local, um, bullfighters that are going to be participating in the rodeo. Third, and my, my primary thought here was that, um, I participated in rodeo in Custer County as a kid. Went on to college with a scholarship for rodeo, got me through nursing school and here I am now your public county, your county public nurse. So don't discount the power of rodeo in this county.
Can I suggest one other? Since Morgan County does it and Warfino County does it, I suggest we reach out to them.
Find out.
And find out what's their justification. How do they feel that's their statutory authority as commissioners to sponsor something like this? I'd like some input from somebody else, actually.
So if we did that, can we do it in time to spend this year's money?
It would have to be the last meeting of the month if we could get an answer tonight.
What's left in the pot rather than buying a CD.
If, if, what you're saying, we could, if we chose, we commissioners, could say that our community outreach money that at, on January 1st, we go back into the general fund. We could make a motion, allocate that to the fund that we have in 2020. Therefore, this year's funds would not go to the general fund. It would be added to the budgeted amount that we have, which would allow us a larger pot to deal with in January. I'm, I'm just bringing that up because I have other interests, as you know, for that money.
I know.
But that's not, that's not on the table and I'm not, this has nothing to do with what this discussion is. So, I mean, we have that opportunity to move that money. So, I mean, we have that opportunity to move that money if we choose to.
I'm trying to limit my input here. I think this is appropriate. I think our, our community outreach money is discretionary money that the commissioners can use. It's not like we're gonna add a tax or a fee, right? It's that discretion. I don't know that there is any statutory requirements of how we spend community outreach money.
And I would agree with that, Chairman. If we had a sick employee who needed five thousand dollars for a hospital bill and they were gonna go bankrupt, I would say, even though is that the proper use of citizen tax dollars, we have that discretion. We were given that discretion to do that in our budget. So I don't think we're limited to that, but I'm very, I don't even wanna use the word very. I am concerned, is this the proper use of tax dollars for this particular...
Or we could go donate it to the motor graders and get a new blade and not mess up the snow on the driveway.
I don't even wanna go there with it. I mean, the community outreach is for this type of activity. We have Rota Bridge budgeted for Rota Bridge blades, but, I mean, the purpose of outreach is for somebody who we didn't budget for, needs some money, it's not a lot of money we have in there, to help them do that.
Well, let's do, Jake, let's take her in the two steps. You made a good suggestion. I think we need to check and see what Warfino County did and what is it, Morgan County or whatever. There's probably others.
Sure.
And find out, and then we can make the motion to move the money into the bigger pot, I think's a good idea. You got time, you don't have to have it today. We've got thirty days before the event.
On the 31st, we need to make the motion, otherwise on the 1st, the money would go to the general fund. So it would need to be on the agenda for the 31st. If we choose to do that, and please understand, rodeo folks, I think this is a wonderful, wonderful project. I'm just concerned about, is it the proper use of tax dollars?
Okay, so in order to make our timeline, it sounds like the right thing to do. Defer this to the 31st for an action, right? Meanwhile, who's gonna call the county commissioners up in the other counties? Is that gonna be these guys? Why don't we do that? Come back with info.
Okay. Be fine with that, so.
Chairman, retain a motion to postpone the investment.
I'll move, we postpone this, discuss it on the 31st. You guys get the information and...
What fund do they take the money out of to sponsor this?
That is the...
That's the question. There you go.
It's been moved and seconded. I did get a second.
I seconded.
Okay, sorry.
Better do it, 'cause that was your suggestion.
Been moved and seconded to postpone this item of business until December 31st. Would you be available to come back and bring some information for a discussion about that, further discussion, public comment? Bearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of postponement, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Good job there, slick.
Could we put on the 31st, retaining, motion to retain the funds in the discretionary fund?
Yes.
As part of the same deal?
Because it all fits together if we do that.
Same wording? Yeah, and then we need another agenda item, consideration of retaining community outreach funds.
Carryover for...
Carryover for 2020. We'll discuss that at that time.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, discussion of the Engine 32 at the Blizzardine. Are you folks here to talk about that as well?
I am, sir.
Okay?
Please.
Are we gonna shake everybody's hand too?
Sure. Not bad. See, I don't want... And Kelly?
Get that ton out of your way. It's actually, we use it for a microphone. You can sit there and look at yourself.
Nobody wants to look at that. Scare myself every morning.
Okay, you had called and asked to be on the agenda to talk about this? See you, Bob. Thank you.
Back on the 9th of December, we sent this email to all of you guys, bringing this to your attention. We have subsequent had a meeting with Wet Mountain Fire Protection District and the four HOAs with the fire department have come to an agreement. My personal feelings begrudgingly on my side, because I don't think we should be paying for this truck at all, but we met with them last Wednesday night. We agreed to split the cost of this, us paying sixteen thousand dollars, them paying sixteen thousand dollars.
Them who?
Wet Mountain Fire Protection District and then the four HOAs. We're gonna meet Friday to figure out how we're gonna divvy this other sixteen thousand, the other half of the truck, between ourselves. I outlined, we outlined in this email our exceptions to this. I believe we have a special district that is violating their service plan by not sharing this cost fairly across all the taxpayers, which on page two of their service plan, their 1980 service plan, states that it will be done that way. I also believe that they are...
And then the special district, meaning the fire district?
The fire, yeah, Wet Mountain Fire Protection District. Their special district. Yeah, their service plan states, and I'll quote here, if I can find my papers, it states, "The purpose, the proposed district spreads the financial impact of all protected properties on a reasonable and fair basis." Now, when we went to them last week, we asked them, "Who else in this county has ever bought, been required to buy and give them a fire truck?" In the history of this district, in the forty years, it's never happened.
How come you agree?
Well, I feel like we're being coerced and extorted if you wanna be honest about it. We've been told that they're gonna pull that fire truck if we don't pay for this fire truck. They've written that in the two attachments, if you read the two attachments, they blatantly said that if you don't pay for this fire truck, we're gonna take the fire truck and we're gonna negatively impact your ISO rating by pulling this truck. And it states that plainly in the letter.
I have a question for you. Vance, if I may. From day one, did your or any other HOAs sign a lease contract and agreement to help pay for this fire truck?
There were some discussions back in, this time two years ago, and I've got their meeting minutes, et cetera, where there were some discussions between the boards. And there were some agreements that if there could be some grants coming forward, that the HOAs would come forward with some matching money. If they could give grants and stuff, those fell through. So there, no money was...
Is that why Mr. Klein decided to buy it upfront and let those things occur and get reimbursed?
As my understanding, I wasn't...
He agreed to do that?
Yes, I'm sorry. I wasn't involved in those. My understanding from reading the minutes and talking to other people, talking, emailing to the board members who were on the board at that time, who no longer live here, that was their agreement, that if we could come up with, if someone could come up with either the HOAs, the fire department. And they did approach El Palmar, and El Palmar said, "No, we only buy new trucks, we don't buy used trucks, et cetera." And then Rob Klein came up with and donated, he bought it and signed a purchase or lease agreement with them for two years, and that's coming up, is going to expire next month.
Signed a lease agreement with...
With the Wet Mountain Fire Protection District.
No HOA...
No HOA involvement whatsoever. And I've got a copy of that here if you would like to see it.
He must have participated in meetings.
He did, and he still is. He was there Wednesday night. And so, and then there was another person who had come forward and said that they would sign, they would actually pay twenty thousand dollars or whatever to help pay for the truck. There was a drafted purchase agreement for him, and then that was never assigned. I've got a copy of that, but it's unassigned, so it's really irrelevant to discussion. So here's our question, gentlemen. Here's our quandary. We want that fire truck. We need the fire protection down there. It benefits everybody on the south end of the county, not only the three or the four HOAs. We're meeting Friday to discuss this, to see if we can come up with whatever funds we can come up with to pay the sixteen thousand dollars, however that's shared out. I'm coming to you... Yes, sir.
Just real quick, before we lose the thought.
Okay.
Does the fire department agree then they'll maintain and continue, they're not gonna go to the HOAs to buy new equipment, to maintain the equipment, to do upgrades in the future?
Yeah.
Are they gonna take on that as part of the new fire district, fire station?
Yes.
Is it gonna be permanently theirs? This is the seed?
Yes, that's exactly it. And that was what we discussed on Wednesday night. We're gonna, there's gonna be a legal document that's drafted up. We are going to, for lack of a better term, donate this money to get this fire truck to them, but there will be no liability, there will be no maintenance, there will be no nothing. This will be a donation.
They're not gonna abandon that when that truck...
Right. And Roger Camper stated in the meeting that this truck is in their service plan, it's in their protection plan, it's being incorporated, and their intention is, is to maintain it. So it's just paying for it. So here's the crux of my story. When I'm coming to you, I'm asking you to dip into your bucket too. I'm asking you guys to help us, the four HOAs, pay for this sixteen thousand dollars for this truck. This truck, you guys, the county derives a direct benefit at the airport. It's in, it's at the airport, it can respond to crashes, it can respond to incidents on the highway, et cetera. It's a direct public safety benefit. Well, we're asking, there's two things I'm gonna ask you to. First thing is, I'm asking you for money. Would you be willing to split this sixteen thousand dollars with the HOA five ways with thirty-two hundred dollars of public safety funds, public outreach funds, wherever you could pull this money from?
Five, what do you divide, the sixteen thousand dollars?
Well, the four, yeah, the sixteen thousand dollars by five ways. And that would be thirty-two hundred dollars an entity, the four HOAs and yourselves, the county, to cover the, to make sure that we keep a fire truck down there. Because if we don't come up with this money, they've told us in writing that they could very well pull this truck and give it back to Mr. Klein, who has his truck, if we don't come up with the money on the, at the end of the lease agreement.
This is incredible.
Thank you, sir. That's exactly what I thought. I cannot believe we've gotten to this point. It's...
This is incredible. To find upon a once, the potential users of the service to pay for it even though they're statutorily required to provide that.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, they're not statutorily required to put a fire truck at the airport. They did that.
For all the services.
Yes, which they do.
And they will. Don't drive thirteen miles out.
The reason that truck is out there was to reduce, try to reduce, which did, right?
Oh, it dropped our ISO rating from a nine to a five. I mean, we've, and you know, the homeowners are very adamant, we do not wanna lose that truck. I'd save three hundred dollars a year on my insurance.
Well, you may have saved your house in the travel time.
Well, yeah, I mean, and it's, yeah, it's a huge benefit. It was absolutely needed. You know, I stood up this summer at the meeting you guys were having out there, I applauded the things you guys were doing, road and bridge, we're all very supportive of this. It's just, and I'll be honest with you, we did not know until the 23rd of October that this truck was not paid for. Nothing was said for 21 months until the 23rd of October, when we received, all the HOAs received these things, said, "Pay up or you lose it." It was very shocking, so.
Go ahead, sir. Thank you. My first thought was, when you sat down, I don't think this is a, I'm gonna, this was not a commissioner issue. This was a dispute between the Fire Protection District and HOA or HOAs. And I thought, we really don't have a business in this. But I'm reconsidering that because I made the statement a minute ago. What is the responsibility of government is to protect people. And putting a fire truck closer to a significant number of individuals certainly does fall within the purview, I feel, of our job of protecting people. So maybe it is a commissioner issue. At first, I thought, I don't think I needed, when I read the documentation, I thought, I feel for you, but I don't think it's our issue. And I'm not sure it's, maybe it is.
Well, and there's a thousand one hundred and twenty-three taxpayer properties that make up the four HOAs. I mean, and that's not, that's not all of it. I mean, we've got ranchers outside of these HOAs. One thousand one hundred and twenty-three owners make up the four HOAs, properties, own properties. There's one thousand one hundred and twenty-three properties in them.
And what are the four, what's the other three?
It's Centennial Ranch, Timber Ridge, and Silver West, and Corny Verde.
Okay.
We have no authority over the fire district. We can't say to them, "You leave that fire truck there." We can't tell them that this ransom that they're asking for, 'cause that's the way it sounded to me.
Yeah.
Pay the ransom or we're gonna kill them.
They're responsible for managing their business. I mean, their business is providing fire protection for the county, the whole county. And, you know, that's a hard call.
Yeah, I split it a little differently. As I indicated to you, Vincent, in email, I still believe this. I know it perturbed you, but I don't believe this is a county issue. That has no reflection on why you're here today. I will consider your request based on its merits. I don't think it's any of our business about you being at odds with the fire department over this. I've spoken to a director of the fire department, and he indicated to me that this was not a county issue. When I asked him, "Do you believe this is a county issue?" He said, "No, I don't believe it is either." Again.
I guess we'll disagree.
But that has nothing to do with why you're here asking us the money to take from where I see it.
He's right. Let me talk...
Community outreach money to help them assist. Go ahead, Bill.
Let me, let me just make that statement. I agree because we have a special district set up to do exactly what you're concerned. And my concern too, I don't wanna see the, their ISO rating go down, but more importantly, I don't wanna see his house burn completely down when the truck has to run all the way out there and it's to the benefit of the fire district. But that is an issue for them to work out and figure out how to raise the money. Now, where they, the fire district could come to us as, you know, with an IGA of some kind where we're participating with them, I don't know. But we need to do more than just, than just say, "Well, come to us and we'll consider everybody's..." Just like you mentioned before, Tom did before, where do you draw the line? Especially when they have the authority to do the job that they're doing. And taxpayers, all of them, equally, to provide the protection everywhere. And you are paying, you're a thousand people. That's a fourth of the county population, roughly, you know. Not quite, but you're paying taxes for everybody else too.
Right, it's a shared cost.
So this is hard.
That's why, you didn't want me to bring something easy, did you?
Yeah, I just...
And me, we can't help, we consider.
I'm not gonna point out a specific example because it probably wouldn't be fair, given we're live streaming, but if an entity came to us and said, "We need some financial help." Okay, I will base my decision on those merits, as I will with this request. I'm not interested in getting in the weeds with the fire department's hospital, or tax district, and the HOAs, any HOA, doesn't matter to me. We have nothing to do with that tax district. They, that's why they are a tax district. They have their own governance. We have no statutory-backed influence or responsibilities or anything else, just like we don't with the school, or the clinic, or any other special tax district. That's where I wanna draw the line. I will consider your request on its merits. I don't want that to get confused with what I'm saying.
Okay.
If, you're not asking us to go down there to that meeting and lean on the fire department. That's not your ask today.
Not at this point in time.
That's right, yeah. So, that's, I guess where I take a little exception with Mr. Prince's comments, is I still don't believe it's a county issue. That doesn't mean we can't consider helping you.
I hope you consider helping the county. Yes.
My point was, the HOA, fire department, it's not our issue, but a request, in my opinion, okay, but a request to assist them so that they can provide additional protection. And I'm not, I don't care about ISO ratings, I truly do not. I mean, I think it's a nice benefit.
It is.
I really care about, is if you call for a fire truck, one will be there fifteen minutes earlier because it's closer.
Yes, sir.
That's what I'm concerned about, okay?
Yes, sir.
The health and safety.
Right.
Okay, so I think it's a valid request in terms of, just as, just like the rodeo or the... Rotary, thank you. Rotary did, because I feel this would be a benefit for the citizen... Rotary did, because I feel this would be a benefit for the citizens of the county, the ones who use it, just like the rodeo van, the rate, um, rotary van. Not everybody uses it, but it's available if you need it. The same thing here. I could have a car wreck in front of the airport and the fire department needs to come out, I'm that much closer. So, it's not just the HOAs, it's the community. So, I could, I could support assisting in this ransom demand. And I, I'm sorry, I'm going on record as actually saying that. That's what it sounds like to me. And I, I, I'm not trying to knock the fire department.
I'm not either.
They have a terrible, terribly hard job. I understand that. But if you say, pay up or we're going to do something detrimental to hurt you, that sounds like a ransom to me. And maybe I should be a lot more politically correct, but I'm not. So, hey, Rick.
So...
I would, I could support assisting this.
So I think I just heard you say that this request, just like the Saddle Club request, were valid requests. That's what you said.
Okay, well, maybe I need to clarify.
Because I gathered you were thinking the Saddle Club request wasn't a valid request.
I have never said that. I said, I'm having a hard time just declaring spending taxpayer dollars for private enterprise. This is for public benefit. Now, it happens to be a segmented public, but everything's a segmented public when we do something. I'm in favor of the water line. I will tell you that right now because it's the benefit to the county. I'm in favor of this request because there's a significant number of people that it will benefit. I'm disappointed that we have to do this, but I don't have, I have, that is not within my purview to go to the fire department and say, you will do this or you will. I have no authority, none whatsoever.
Well, we don't have to do it.
Absolutely not.
Um, Commissioner Canada comments?
The, uh, I, I am a, one question.
Yes, sir.
What are they going to do with the fire truck if you didn't do it?
Well, Rob Klein's going to take possession back of it. Their lease agreement is up.
Right, and so they don't want it at all?
No, no, they actually, they had a loan. Go ahead.
Question I'm asking is, so you didn't. And they're still obligated to provide you fire protection out there. And so they're going to allow themselves to go one engine down and still provide the same level of protection? Is, is that their logic?
I, I wish you guys could have come as, to the meeting on Wednesday because, now, you asked me a question, so if, if we don't come up with the money, the truck is going to disappear. I mean, it's going to go back to Rob Klein because he actually owns it. It's only leased to them. Now, there was quite a protracted discussion between Roger and Kit Shy and, and the board about, well, do we really need this truck? You know, could we let this truck go? Could we bring and relocate another engine to this location? And Dave Thompson and Kit Shy were very adamant that they, this truck needed to be in the fleet. It was a benefit to the county. Um, it was a benefit to that. They weren't sure that they needed, because all the other engines were committed and in the service plan and stuff. So, and I don't want to speak for them. That was the discussion I heard them have at the meeting. And then when it was all said and done, they made a vote and said, all right, we need to keep this truck. This is true. This truck is integral. It's, it's integral to the airport, the south end of the county, the HOAs, I mean, it, all the whole ball of lives.
So, did they discuss, it seems to me they got a money issue just like we do.
Everybody does.
They don't have the money, they haven't got 32 grand sitting there to go give to it now. They got caught as cold as anybody else did. But it seems to me you've, you've got an agreement between four HOAs that are willing to finance that for them. Why can't they pay you back through the, through the year, uh, just like the Saddle Club did for us when the hydrant broke and got them strapped for 30, well, it was X thousands of dollars and they took it on and, and paid payments?
So you're asking me questions about the fire department's budget that I can't answer?
Well, that's my, my point. Did that discussion go on? Because it sounds to me you already...
I have their 2020 proposed budget that they're supposed to adopt tonight.
But you see...
And there's not a mention in here about engine 32, so...
Vince, that, but that's the point though. You guys took on a commitment already with them to finance 16 grand.
Well, because...
Because, and then you were hoping to get...
Of your description.
Well, well, that's the point. Uh, I think you got a, you got the lever, leverage on them. And it, you've been very, um, magnanimous in doing what you've done. You really have. If they'll pay you back, what's wrong with that?
They're not going to pay us back.
Well, I don't know. They said they needed the engine.
So, we've had that discussion. They didn't include it in their 2020 budget, which they're adopting tonight, which I believe is a taxpayer, they have a responsibility to their service plan to do that.
Seems like that would be in their benefit.
And, so...
You have not gotten confirmation from the four HOAs to kick in?
Just verbal that we're meeting Friday afternoon at 1:00 at the, at the airport, at the maintenance hangar to discuss how we're going to divvy this up. Now, I have a document that I've drafted up. We're not going to be doing anymore of this handshake, brother-in-law, son-in-law deal that when, if we walk out of that room, everybody's going to sign that document that we commit and we have the legal authority to commit our HOA to pay this amount of money towards this truck. I'm, I don't do handshakes. Business is business and it needs to be in writing, so...
Well, transparency, a board member of the hospital, you know where my mind's been for the last six months.
Fire.
I knew you were going to love this discussion.
Uh, told me they've invested over $45,000 on that fire engine.
We had that discussion also.
All right.
That's the cost of equipping a truck, regardless of whether it's this truck or another truck.
The fire department has already invested over 40 grand in that.
Yeah, actually, it's probably closer to 50 on their discussion lab this week, this last week.
Uh, I guess my general opinion as commissioner would be that if you get a commitment from your HOA members, HOAs, members out there, if they're willing to put their money on the line, then I would give serious consideration to helping them.
Okay. So is that a...
No, that's just his opinion.
Yeah, that's my opinion.
You got to remember, he's, he's chairman of the board.
No, I, I get that. I get that. I get that. I understand how the boards work.
Yeah, he made the decisions. He made that pretty clear.
My opinion, that I would be...
Well, I'm asking the others, what is your opinion?
I'm just telling you where I'm coming from.
I have a hard time...
Go ahead, sir.
...from.
Vince.
Vince.
I move that if the other four entities agree to pay their share, that cluster county pay, the board of county commissioners pay a share equal to the amount that the four other HOAs pay. If in fact, I know it's a law motion, so we may need to call it something. If any of the HOAs refuse to participate, and I know this is kind of a ransom thing I'm giving you right now.
No, no, it's...
I don't feel that we should participate. They need...
Good. Emotion, emotion.
The motion is to, to give $3,500 to, um, $3,200, um, to help defray the cost of the, um, fire engine provided all the HOAs join in the agreement.
I'll second the motion. I almost didn't because I'm still not satisfied with the motion, but maybe we'd work on that as well.
Yeah, I'm not satisfied. Let's discuss it.
But you understand what I'm trying to say.
Yes, I certainly understand. At least I think I do. Correct me if I don't. So, I'm going to brief paraphrase a little if that's okay with you.
Sure.
All right. Moving seconded for the county commissioners to contribute on an equal basis $3,200 with the other four HOAs.
What is it really?
If and when that happens.
It's actually a little bit further than that. Provided all the entities contribute.
Right, if and when that happens. They put theirs up, we put ours up. That's it.
To a maximum of $3,200.
$3,200.
All right, so you've moved in second. So let me, let me say one thing.
Help yourself.
I don't fa, I'm not in favor of that, but I would be in favor of a loan to the, to the, um, fire district of 3,200 bucks. If they, rather than wherein whether the HOAs all pony up together, I would like to have them not just pony up, but I would go back and actually argue the point. I don't think that was clear, clear in your discussion, the way you've described it anyway, clear to everybody. If the fire department hasn't got the money, they haven't got the money. And you guys need the fire truck and the fire truck department wants to, and they've equipped it. They've spent a lot of money in it. Um, I, I think that would be a better use of our money to look at getting it back at some point, uh, and put back into, to use. But this, this is a, a good way that the community can work with the fire district in a time when they're pinched. I, I don't doubt that they are. And we, and we have the $3,200, I think, I don't know. We've got a lot of people wanting to get into our little pot of outreach here. And so, um, you know, I would caddy on that.
May I respond to this? Respectfully, I, I really disagree. I don't feel the county has any business giving money, loaning money, doing anything with the fire district. I think we do have a, we do have a right to assist the citizens who are trying to get something done, to help them with a better situation for their community. So, I'm not in favor of giving money to the fire department, whether it's a loan, whatever. They're a separate tax entity. Could you imagine us going to them saying, could you lend us some money? I mean, you know, it's just not, it's just not right, I don't think. That's my opinion.
Uh, would it be fair to add the word earmark $3,200 or commit $3,200? We're not writing the check today. We're not going to turn in a voucher request today, right? That was the intent that...
The intent is...
With the response of the HOAs coming up with their money, your intent of your motion was for us to commit that same...
We have the last one in. If the rest are in, we're in. If any of them not in, we're not in.
But Jay, you just went against what you just said. You're, you're, you just said you don't, you're not in favor of giving them any money or a loan.
Fire department.
The fire department.
He's talking about this group.
I would give the, I don't know what you're going to call it.
That's giving the fire department the money.
I am not going to give them the money. They can give them the money.
The fire department's not here asking us. These guys are.
I know.
Right? You're asking us to contribute to your fund that you're going to give to the fire department.
But any citizen can come in here and do the same thing to us then, guys.
Well, sure they can. Absolutely.
And they just did a little while ago.
I would rather help, help work a deal with them than I would to be giving them money, period. You were 100% right. They, they are a fire district and they're working with these guys.
And we're trying to work out a deal to, to protect over 1,000 county residents.
But you're asking us to contribute money to your pot of money that you're gathering.
Yes, sir.
End of discussion.
Yeah, when I, yeah, yes, sir.
I mean, the unspoken intent is that money's going to go pay for this fire. But it doesn't get paid to the fire department, it gets paid to Klein, really.
Yes, there's no long run. It gets a wash through, yes. It's, so...
It gets paid to the fire department.
As I understand the motion, we would come up with $12,800. You guys, if we can come up with that, your motion is, is that you would help us come up with 3,200 to, to finish out the 16,000.
Right.
Okay.
Further discussion, gentlemen?
No, I want to help the fire department, but I cannot help them that way. I want to do it. And so I, I can't support the way you're doing it. I want to help the fire department.
I don't support the way we're having to do it either, Mr. Canada. But I'm stuck in the middle.
So you said you're meeting on Friday. You're hoping to get this cleaned up before the end of the year, before March? I can't remember the date.
We've, we've got a commitment, uh, we have to go back to the fire department with a written commitment that we will, by 8 December at their next board meeting, that we have our $16,000. The 16, the whole $32,000 is payable to Mr. Klein by the 13th of March of 2020.
Not 8 December, but...
No, we just need a commitment to them that we've got the money.
January.
Uh, January. Did I say December? I'm sorry. January, 8, 8 January, I wrote December even here on my notes. I apologize.
Who will own this fire truck?
The fire department. We want no ownership of fire trucks.
I understand that, that, really the preface to the real question is, what assurances do you have that if you, the five entities pay this, that that fire truck will stay either at its present location or in a location that will assist them?
We ask that, we want a written, drafted by their lawyer, release of liability. We want an assurance that that fire truck is going to be there and in their service plan for the long range and that they will do their very, level best to keep our ISO ratings at a five by that. But we discussed that in our meeting last Wednesday. Those were commitments that we wanted from them. Okay.
So, a thought, gentlemen, would it be more appropriate, I know we have a motion on the table, which is fine, I understand.
We can let it die if we need to.
Would it be more appropriate to act on this motion when these folks are sitting here with a check? I get a little nervous about us making motions based on ifs, what ifs, when this. And we've done it time and time again. I've never been real comfortable with that. Would it be more prudent for us to wait and deal with it when these folks have their financial commitments made?
I, I would be in favor of that if you work harder with the fire. I, I still believe it's double taxation, guys. We're, we're, it is. It flat out is that you're, we're getting taxpayer money for other things. We keep bringing it up all the time to help people do things and I want to help. But, you know, it's taken, uh, people paying a, a fire depart, a district to protect them, period. And then we're going to take some more money and we're going to give it specifically for that fire engine, period. It's not to these guys, it's to the fire department to help these guys. And so that's the dilemma. And so you, you, you know, we, we can't speak out of both sides of our mouths. Uh, you know, it's, I empathize. I want to help, but I think that we can do it by using the taxpayers' money and get it, uh, uh, back. I really do. Let them pay it back. Why not? We'd let the fair board pay it back.
Bill who? Them being the HOA or the fire department?
The fire department. That's who the deal is. It's not the HOA. The fire department is the one that's accountable for the fire business in this county.
Can I respond to what you said? Um, Mr. Chairman, I, I think it's well taken in terms of, should we allocate something on a, if this happens, then it's going to take place. And there's a lot of allusion to what you're saying. However, I feel in a case like this, it's appropriate because then this HOA could go to the other HOAs to say, we already have a commitment from the county if you join us, as opposed to the county may join us if we do this.
Valid point.
So, that's the other reason in this particular case, I, I would feel more comfortable saying it's a commit, if they all commit, we commit so that they know that we're, we're feeling their pain. We want their safety. And, and we're all talking the same thing, it's just how we get there.
That's right.
I'm with you.
We gotta do it all the right way.
So, to address Commissioner Candace's point, the fire department doesn't own this truck.
Not today.
They're leasing it.
Yes.
Somebody's going to buy it from Mr. Klein.
The fire department.
Okay.
We're not. You made a great, about two years ago, I have one meeting minutes in your, from one of their meetings, and you made a comment in there, this is not a private fire truck. We don't want to own a fire truck. We didn't want to get involved.
Right. Okay. Right. So, you're not paying Mr. Klein?
No.
You're going to donate this money to the fire department to help them offset the cost?
For lack of a more appropriate term, yes.
So, then to Mr., Commissioner Candace's point, I would assume the intent is for us to donate, if that's how we vote. We would be donating money to the fire department to pay, help pay, offset the cost of this truck.
But he wants to reimburse the thirty-two hundred dollars.
Excuse me.
That would be the right thing to do. Otherwise, we're double taxing the guy, the rest of the county. I know that thirty-two hundred dollars isn't a lot of money, but it's the precedence.
Your point's well taken.
I'm going to throw out a comment, and it has to do with the three things we've talked about this morning, and I could be so far off base, it would become laughable. And I'm talking about specifically our community outreach money. If we say, we're going to take X number of dollars and put in community outreach line item, our finance director's sitting back there, um, she may be the first to start laughing, but if we earmark funds to put into that discretionary, commissioner discretionary community outreach fund, I almost think that that is no longer tax money. That is discretionary money that these three people can spend however they want and however they feel like they can best represent the citizens of their county. Now, I, I could be way off, but I think we've taken tax money and now we've earmarked it to say, we're going to discretionarily give this money to whoever we want for whatever rea, reason we want.
To benefit the whole county, Tom.
Um, hopefully, that's-
That's why you do it.
Or to benefit-
That's tax money that we've been given to wisely use for our-
It may not benefit all the county, but to benefit, appropriately benefit citizens of our county. Maybe not all of them. Rotary van is not going to benefit all the citizens of this county. I don't care what you say. It's a fact. But we support that.
But it could.
Could, could I make a comment? The, the fire truck benefits the whole county, and this is what we were talking, because that truck is not just, I mean, to, to your point, if we had a fire in West Cliff and they needed more engines, they would call those-
Sure they'd bring that in there.
Oh, yeah. It's, it's an asset for the whole county. I mean, in-
Go ahead, sir.
I think you hit it right on the head. The community outreach is money that we have, that we can spend as we see fit. And whether we see fit to do with a rodeo, and that's certainly a possibility, or we see to, to help with a fire truck purchase, that's our discretion. Now, we have to remember where that money came from, so we can't squander it. We have to make sure that we're doing something that's best for the community, even though it's going to be segmented, you know? The only time I'm going to be using your fire truck is if I have a rep with a fire truck company, I'm assuming. Or it could be, you know, downtown, like you said. So, it, I'm not looking this as a benefit for the people of what more. I think it's unlikely that fire trucks are going to have a right to help with something. But it's a community, it's, it's for the benefit of the community. I think we have the right to spend that money any way we see fit.
Okay, I'll agree with that, but the deal is between us then and the fire department, not through these guys.
Agree.
And if we're going to get in an argument, and with taxpayer money, they better be defending their taxpayer money as well. And so, so that we could get, that, to me, warrants a, a discussion between us and them to understand why they can't do it, what, why they would even think about moving that out of that area, and that's a better way of handling it, uh, you know, as a, as a business with them, and have that discussion with us to decide whether, okay, we're going to give you the money, fire department, not these guys. You see what I'm saying?
Yep.
That's the way it ought to be done.
If we give it to them and they give it to the fire department, we give it to the fire department. What's the difference?
Jay, it's how, because I don't know, the discussion they had, that was a, a, an argument, and I, and I understand, in the heat of battle, where a lot of things may, of more calmer minds may have had a talk with the, the fire department at that time, and said, it would not have been a ransom, uh, come across as a ransom, which is crazy. I can't believe they would even talk like that and make it sound like that. They should have had that discussion with us, because we have the citizens of this county that, that, just like you say, it's our duty to make sure they're protected and safe and all that stuff. Well, right now, we're dealing through a third party. It doesn't make sense to me, especially if we're going to take taxpayer money and, and give it for a worthy cause.
To call it down to-
Because I don't know even thirty-two hundred.
Call it down to a couple words.
Maybe do it with less.
What is it that you think that we should do?
I think, the way, if we're going to wait, we ought to do it calmly and correctly. We got time to, to deal with this, and I would have a meeting with the fire department over this whole thing.
It's a radical idea.
You know? That's not a, and it, we can do it in the, after the first year. Why, why are we in a hurry to give away thirty-two hundred bucks today? They're not going to pull that truck now.
A lot of people are in a hurry, they're asking us for thirty-two hundred.
I know.
The fire department is not here asking us for thirty-two hundred dollars.
And, and so, but it's tied up in, in, in the timing. When are they going to pull the truck? Uh, the first, January the first?
According to the lease, it's up to twenty-sixth of, uh, January two thousand and-
Okay, there you go.
And they're wanting a commitment from us. They asked us for a commitment by the eighth, so that they could do all the legal drafting and all of that.
They are, they have the interest of this county at heart, too. I want to meet with them personally. My, my position.
Uh, the only reason I'm not calling for the question is because to honor the public comment. I want after more public comment, we've been on this almost eighteen, nineteen minutes when we had good-
I said ten.
Before chairman, I said ten.
I said forty-five.
But the intent was, this sounds kind of cheesy, the intent of the ten-minute timeframe was not to prevent us from having a discussion, because soon as this meeting's adjourned, we're not going to discuss it.
Right. I understand.
It was, more, it would take ten minutes worth of public input on this, but nonetheless, is there other public comment? Yes, ma'am?
I, I just, I'm, um, I'm appalled that there has been so much said about the fire department without them here to defend themselves. There are two sides to every story, and, and anybody could come in here and say, we're at war with the clinic, we're at war with the school, we, and we want money. There's, we, you don't have enough information at this point to give money away. I mean, can, anybody can come and say, we want a fire truck in our, on our road, and we, you know, we're insisting that you help pay for it. There's got to be input from the fire department. I have questions for them, but I have one question. You said that there were a hun, one thousand one hundred and twenty-three properties. That's properties, that's not citizens at this point, correct?
I said taxpayers.
Well, no.
Taxpayer properties. Property owners.
But that's not population. That's property owners. Is that correct? There are that many properties in those four HOAs.
That are owned by taxpayers.
Right.
But all of them don't have houses, Vince, do they?
Have people living on them.
But, but a fire is a fire, either whether it's on pro-
But, but, but Bill had mentioned-
Yeah, I mentioned the population, and that would be wrong.
But it's not population. Okay, so if those one thousand one hundred and twenty-three properties wanted that truck out there, they could pay for the whole truck with twenty-eight dollars per pe, per property.
And to your point, that's double taxation.
No, it's not, because they're going to get a fire truck. They have a fire truck, they're going to get one. They may not get one as fast, they lost one.
I'm not going to argue with the lady then.
I just, that's just my, my view.
That's a discussion in that.
Other public comment?
Yes, ma'am. My name's Matt Clark, I ask to represent Cornavertie. And, and I liked the discussion that was going on. I wanted to see this play out, but I liked the discussion that was going on, that you wanted to give the money to the county, because the county does have involvement with the fire protection district. A fire protection district is set up as a special district inside the county. You are the JHA, you are the jurisdiction having authority, and you do have involvement. And we, we may want to investigate. I came unprepared, because I didn't, I wasn't prepared to speak on the Blizzard Island station today, I came for another reason. However, under Title Thirty-two, and I, because I've had, um, involvement with fire protection districts, and you have oversight. You at least have oversight to the fire protection. Nobody can just come into your county and set up a government without some oversight. Sir?
I believe once that task district has been established by the voters with the consent to the county commissioners, that oversight will get watered down severely.
We don't, we don't have anything to do with their budget.
You guys have no deal with their budgets, they can basically run their budgets and, and ask for-
But if they're failing this county, then you're right, we, we would have to stand tall on fixing the problem with that.
Absolutely. This county's going to grow, and as we've established, that truck is a county truck, is going to be a county truck. It could be pulled out of our district at any point.
Yeah, that is not a county truck, that will never show up anywhere.
It's not our, we don't maintain it, it's not our.
Uh, further public comment? So, would you like to take a stab at reading the motion? Because you are the recording secretary.
What I have is, uh, the motion to contribute thirty-two hundred dollars towards the fire truck, provided all four HOAs contribute also.
Equally.
Equally.
Well, doesn't really matter.
Or just come up with the twelve thousand eight hundred dollars or-
Maybe that's better. Yeah. If they bring twelve thousand eight hundred to the table. Doesn't have to be equally, maybe Vince decides he wants to.
And we have some, some members who are saying, oh, donate three hundred, five hundred dollars.
That does beg the question, though, then. You've already agreed as HOAs to come up with the total of sixteen thousand bucks. You're coming here to try to offset-
They have not agreed.
Well, that's what he said on the front of the-
Well, we've agreed to go, we've agreed to go discuss it and figure out how we're going to divvy up that sixteen thousand.
The county never came into it.
No, and what the discussion was, was could you guys get a report?
I would rather have them come with us, saying they have a commitment for the sixteen thousand dollars if you're going to follow through with this, and, and you're going to come back and say, can you help defray it? But I'm, I'm not in favor of that either, but I'm just saying-
I'm lost on what you just said.
Your HOAs are accountable for sixteen thousand bucks. That's what you wanted to, to cut the deal with the fire department. You would come back with sixteen thousand dollars.
Well, we told them that we were trying to come up with sixteen thousand dollars.
And the HOAs, right now, except for your HOA, are assuming they're all going to pay a fourth of the sixteen thousand bucks.
Well, I wouldn't say that. We haven't agreed on what proportion we're going to each take on as a responsibility.
That's why I said equally may not be the right.
Yeah.
Not enough information here even on that.
Because we've got a disparity. I mean, if you look at Centennial Ranch and Cornavertie, each of us had five hundred and twenty-six properties, the other ones only had about seventy.
I honestly think they ought to come, they've gotten till the end of, uh, January. I think you guys got to come back with more information as well, just like you're, you're saying here.
We owe them.
And we need to talk to the fire department before we vote on anything, I think.
Further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of committing thirty-two hundred dollars? Again, I'm making this assumption out of community outreach.
Right.
Uh, to be contributed towards the purchase of the fire truck from Mr. Klein, or, it's not really accurate either, gosh darn it, to contribute thirty-two hundred dollars towards the purchase of the fire truck, with the understanding that the HOAs are going to contribute twelve thousand eight hundred dollars towards that. Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay?
Nay.
Nay. Uh, motion fails. I would like to speak to my vote. I voted against it because I think there's a clearer way we need to do this. I asked Commissioner Prince if he wanted to withdraw that. He said, no, he would like to have a vote on that today. It's not an indictment on the process, it's not an indictment on your ass, it was an indictment on our process. I just felt like we were chasing a rabbit. So, all right, sir?
So, how do we go from here?
Okay. Uh, I would, I would think, this is my personal opinion, we all might have different ones. That you can ask your HOAs if they want to contribute, that you could come back to the commissioners, you could come in and ask the commissioners to deal with this directly with the fire. I don't know, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but obviously, we didn't get anywhere this morning, so we need to come at it from a different direction. Would you agree?
Well, you made a statement that you wanted to go have a conversation with the fire department. Are you going to do that?
Well, we don't have to, right? Because right now, that's their job. But if we're going to pursue this, I would think that you would ask the fire department to make, have a conversation with us, if you're going to pursue county money to be transferred to the fire department. And, and I would certainly want to participate and think we should talk with the fire department and have a workshop, or whatever we want to call it, to form an IGA, some kind of an agreement with them that we're going to donate some money to them. Because I, I really don't think, Vince, that it's the right approach to go through, you know, a third party.
What's your position?
You see what I'm saying?
Sitting in this chair, I don't feel it's right to be extorted by a government agency within this county.
I agree.
And that's why I'm, one of the reasons I'm here. And I'll tell you honestly, gentlemen, my next position on this, and I'm, I'm not speaking for Cornavertie now, I'm speaking for Vince Dugan. I'm writing a gov, a letter to the governor, the attorney general, the Department of Local Affairs, and my local representative to do an investigation on this fire department and this process.
Vince, and that's okay.
Because I think this is illegal. I think they're violating their service plan, and I think they lied on their tax referendum last year on what they were going to do.
So, there, but Vince, so I, I hear you, and you've got the perfect right to do all that you said, but you also, I think, I, and this is public, uh, this discussion, it's not going to go unnoticed at the fire department right now. They're, they, they review it, they see it, I get a lot of comments.
I hope they do.
So, now here's an opportunity. They need to have a discussion now, because I'm sure that they leave the last meeting with the understanding that it came across as extortion to you, that you were held hostage.
That's been communicated very well to them.
As you guys walked out the door.
Well, no, I mean, we were extorted, and they told us they were going to pull our fire truck if we didn't pay for it.
Okay, I'm going to-
So, anyway.
Bring this to close. I know you didn't get your answer, but I'm going to say, probably let us work our process a little bit.
Yeah.
Um, check with legal counsel, see if he has, wants to weigh in on this. I know he didn't this morning, because he knows we're under a time crunch, too, but, um-
He might have a comment now.
I know you didn't get an answer to your question today.
I appreciate your conversation.
I appreciate our struggle with what is the best approach.
And I'll tell you what, I'm proud of you guys going out of here on the road issue and, and taking a hold of the fire truck and all that. You did a good job bringing data to us today.
Well, thank you.
I think there's more that we need to do.
All right, thank you, Vince.
All right, thank you, gentlemen, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, folks, for coming in. Appreciate your interest.
Kelly, thank you.
Let me look real quick here.
Did I make a quick comment?
Yes.
Um, this is going to be jumping back to the water, but I know you guys said that you wanted to, uh, talk to the city and, and figure out your part, but I did not hear who would deassign that or what that timeline would be, speaking of the process.
If it's all right with these gentlemen, I'll pursue the county's portion of this whole project.
That's, that's good, because that's his, you, Sal Club's his emphasis.
Very good. Fair enough. Okay, yeah, good, thank you.
Here you go, Jay.
By consent, gentlemen, uh, three or four minute, let's try to make a three-minute break. Next item of business on the agenda is a discussion with the landfill manager about the hiring process. I would move to postpone this agenda item until December thirty-one.
Which one's that?
Discussion of the landfill.
The landfill manager.
Didn't we not already do that by motion?
No, we waited to see if he came in or not. He did, and he was okay with us postponing that.
I second that.
Been moving seconded to postpone the landfill manager hiring process until December 31. Uh, I just checked, postponed is debatable. Discussion about that, gentlemen? Hearing none. Public comment. Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose nay? Motion carries the landfill manager hiring process has been postponed till December 31. Consider certification of county mill levy, M-mill with one L.
Mill levies, mills levies.
Hi, I vote aye.
Let's postpone this till... Nah.
Yeah, I'm really...
That's not happening yet.
You're gonna run right to that post office, too.
That would not go over very well.
Should only be one L?
Yes.
It's two. That's how it is in statute.
It is.
I wrote it both ways.
I thought it was one.
Yeah.
Karen's right.
Really?
Do I need to hear any?
Lunch, I'll buy you lunch to apologize for that.
Actually, that was me.
Well, it started, yeah, this morning conversation.
Well, it's Elliot Jackson's fault, 'cause she put this mill with one L in her report.
Oh, blame her. Alright, ma'am, floor's yours.
And...
And now the floor's ours.
And now it's back at yours.
Uh, this is the only copy, so I'll share this.
It is, because I need the original, and then I was afraid to get too many copies going without signatures and could end up with one indebted.
So, we're certifying how many mills, how many entities?
Let's see, two schools, the counties, all of our funds, and then the Title 32 districts, and then upper arc, and the library.
Library.
I never counted them, it's just pages of love.
Emergency services.
Yeah, I've done it again.
We're certifying mill levies. The hospital district has two different mill levies that I, you know, I talked about this before, those should be certified separately, 4.098 and 3.0.
So, is this based on the whole, both of them?
7.908.
7.908.
I mean, the county's role in this, and there's case law on this, that certifying mill levies is basically what's called a ministerial act. It's a formality, it's not something you can arbitrarily, or say, we disagree with this or that, but I really think you could insist that they do them as separate mill levies. I'm not, and they have until December 22nd, but I know Donna wants to get this done today, so I don't think we should make an issue of it now, but in the future.
I'd be broke out.
Really suggest that they certify those two mill levies separately, because, for example, if they, if there's some agreement in the future that they're not gonna provide ambulance service, then that one can drop out, or that money can be turned over to some other entity.
Wouldn't be tied to a total mill one.
Be hard to dissolve it out of the joint.
But if it's all lumped together, it's hard to figure out, they should really have two separate accounts and keep that money separate.
And the school does, the schools do separate theirs between mill levy and bond and abatements.
Right, and the bond, they have to, it's required by statute, they do all that separately.
I think the fire department, we've, have we had two mill levies for the fire department? That they might.
I have never heard of that.
Actually, those two, it seems like we had a second one come in, so that that would be a request to keep everybody on there, the two and a five, or whatever they are.
This is based on 109 million, correct, roughly?
Yes.
Some heavy hitters in here, huh?
Who does this all go?
Do you do a lot?
Proper tax issue.
Well, I was answering a couple of numbers, and one was the fire department's revenue on that mill.
Same people, or we sent a dispatch or a public school finance.
Okay, so now I'm gonna move on all of them as a... Let me make sure we're live streaming. Let me make sure we're live streaming. Alright, what's your pleasure?
I move that we authorize the mill levies for county.
Certify.
Certified the mill levy for Custer County for 2020 as presented.
Levies and revenue.
Seconded. Been moving seconded to certify the, uh, mill levies for the year 2020. Discussion. Public comment. Hearing none, proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose nay? Motion carries...
And I will bring you all a copy back once I make a copy with the signature on there. I'm gonna have my list.
Here's the downside.
Just yours.
Have you been over to the post office?
Yeah, I know.
They've been out the door the last two days.
And this, it, they have to have this by the 22nd, which it's not going to make it, but I've got it postmarked as best as I can do.
We could've fed extra, maybe, but...
Um, but I'm, I, you know, with our postage machine, I can do that.
Okay, alright, ma'am, thank you.
Do you want one as well?
No, I just seeing beautiful changes, shove it in that little slot.
No, they have to, I need the stamp on there to show proof.
Thank you. Well, just tell them you're very important.
Thank you.
And you know, I'm thinking they're just gonna bring me right in front of that line.
Next item of business, um, consideration of the hazard mitigation. No, I was taking off, I'm on a, I'm on a, about a fourth generation agenda.
Where are you at? That's on your nonline.
No, we took it off.
He's tired.
Uh, I just never updated the agenda on my computer.
Alpine liquor license.
So, uh, consideration of the liquor license, madam, click to the board.
Okay, so this is Alpine Lodge's renewal, their yearly renewal, um, for their liquor They just have one.
One liquor license.
Liquor and, um, beer together. Um, all of his stuff, he's got his application. I had a, the sheriff's department run a check for the last year, and there was nothing on there. Um, he's got his, um, check for $500 to the state and $100 to us.
I move we renew the liquor license for Alpine Lodge.
Been moving seconded to renew the liquor license for Alpine Lodge. Discussion. Public comment. Hearing none, proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose nay? Motion carries...
Do we just do them for Alpine Lodge in San Isabelle's or any other that we...
On a regular basis.
Alpine Lodge, San Isabel has two, and most of the rest of the ones we do are special events.
All events, otherwise, there's no other restaurants in the county.
Yeah, not as of right now.
Right.
There you go, ma'am.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, consideration of a county sick bank.
That's weird. Sick leave bank, maybe.
Sick leave, yeah, I guess, sick leave.
Sick bank would be a little weird.
Yeah, sick leave bank.
You wanna withdraw from that bank?
Yeah, I wanna have that one.
I, uh, had sent that proposed, it was really a rough draft, proposed with some language to, to consider that could go into the personnel manual. Um, we don't have anything in there about creating a sick leave bank. We've had a request from an employee to donate money to a sick leave bank, and so obviously, we can't do that unless we have a sick leave bank, so, um, I'll pull mine up real quick. Well, I said I'd do it real quick, and that was not true.
Alright, so you sent it, right?
Yes, it was just, I think it was titled addendum as an attachment, I didn't, that's all I had on it, but, uh, so I'll just read what I'd written, just to get discussion started. Employees will be allowed at the time of voluntary separation, either by resignation or retirement, to donate any accrued sick time to an established sick leave bank, to be administered by the BOCC with assistance from the Human Resources Director. The intent of the sick leave bank is to allow employees with extensive illness or traumatic injury to apply to this, to the bank for additional leave time after said employee has utilized any and all sick leave accrued by the sick or injured employee. Donation of the accrued vacation time to the sick leave... Sorry. Donation of accrued vacation time to the sick leave bank will not be allowed. So I had some conversation with Ms. Kelly, Donna, um, in this case, Gary at Road and Bridge, not that that conversation directly impacted this proposed addendum to the policy, but, uh, I thought that would give us a starting place. I think there's some inherent assumptions in here of that there would be an application that a person could fill out and submit to a committee, uh, primarily of some part of the BOCC and, and the Human Resource Director. I don't know if that needs to be spelled out specifically, maybe the application, I don't know, so...
Could be rewritten.
Um, comments, gentlemen?
I have a couple.
Okay.
Um, I would add the words, third line up after apply to the bank, by application traditionally, even though we can put...
Third line?
Third line up after the word bank.
The intent of the sick, of the sick leave bank...
For the traumatic, for the extensive illness or traumatic injury to apply to the bank.
Okay, hold. I'm not sure your lines line up with mine. They might, I don't know, so...
I need my larger for my lousy eyes.
To a, to an established sick leave bank. I was thinking down there where it says traumatic injury to apply via an application.
And that's statute.
Okay, alright, alright.
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay, and then I have a question. Specifically excluded from this is someone whose employment is terminated, um, involuntarily. A, what happens to their sick leave if you are terminated? And B, if there is any sick leave and you're terminated, why would that not go into the bank also?
Depends on why you're terminated. If you're terminated for cause, all that leave goes away.
Shouldn't there be a cap on it, too?
There is, there's caps already in the policy, so that's been implied in this, yeah. If I'm...
Does that really make sense?
Uh, will you state your conservative question again?
Yes. If somebody is terminated for cause.
Okay.
Okay. And they have accrued sick leave at the time of termination. I guess the question was, what happens to that sick leave? And I believe the answer is, is just nullified and goes away.
Forfeited?
Yeah, forfeited, thank you. Much more immediate term.
That's why we paying the big bucks.
My job is done here today.
Yeah. And you had a second part to that.
Well, the other part of that was, why would we not want to include that employee's share into the sick leave bank?
In my opinion, because it will, it will become a financial liability to the county at some point when it's redeemed.
If it's forfeited?
No, if it wasn't forfeited, but if it was put into the bank instead of being forfeited, it would cost us some money.
Well, anytime we form the bank, it's gonna cost us money.
Yes, right. But why increase our exposure to that by adding other people's...
See, and I was thinking, not to scream, it's the same, just another way of looking at it, I was thinking, it is accrued sick leave, and there's a termination, for whatever reason, voluntary or involuntary, it's still a liability on the county that was accrued to the point of termination.
That was already budgeted, so it's not...
Why would we not, why would we exclude, unless, unless someone would say, the only reason I'm being terminated is because you wanted to add my sick leave to the bank? I mean, is that a liability to the county?
Well, I don't think so.
I, when I read this, I read it multiple times, I kept thinking, what if you're terminated for cause, what, why would we just throw that away?
I think the liability's always picked up each budget year. It's already budgeted, because if everybody got sick, we're liable to pay all that we've allocated, period.
I concur with you.
So if you don't use it, you're not picking up an additional liability if you're just gonna save it in a bank, if, as long as that...
So then why would we, if that's the case, and I'm not disagreeing with you, but if that's the case, why would we not want to include involuntary termination?
I wouldn't.
And then it wouldn't be a donation anymore, and then you're basically saying, we're taking it and we're gonna put it in this bank.
Yeah, it wouldn't have anything to do with, it wouldn't be a donation. Uh, I'm trying to find the sentence in here, I think that...
But they can't take it with them.
Uh, addresses this.
Are you leaving now?
No, not till tomorrow.
Oh. You going to the party?
Uh, today, oh, yes.
How many people go under the hood?
Um...
I don't know what they ended up, it was thirty-some, was the last number I heard, but...
We're gonna, um, in total, I think, that was people, I know Abby's not coming.
Yeah, I can't lay my...
Party starts now.
But this is another really important issue, I mean, I really like what you did, I was just questioning whether... Why is it involuntary? You can't take it with you, you don't get paid for it.
Can't take it with you, that's right.
Why don't we just say any sick leave at the time of termination goes into a bank?
There's no, nothing wrong with that, because it's already been allocated.
Yeah, and I think there is something wrong with it.
What?
Uh, it, it's just gonna incur additional unnecessary expense to the county. Yes, it will.
No, not a, not a, in the front of the year, Tom, you have, you're obligated to pay all the sick leave that we've got on the books. If somebody's not using it, he's terminated, it's not an additional liability, as long as you cap it at what you budgeted for the year.
But if somebody's terminated for cause, that, the requirement for us to have those hours on the book are diminished by that number of hours, so we don't, we're not accountable for that anymore.
Well, but it, where's that money going?
Well...
I mean, that money was, it's real money, it's, we had to have a budget. I just say that you, you keep it in the bank in case somebody had a catastrophic use for it, and then you're, all you're doing is paying everything, you said you'd pay anyway, during, if everybody took sick leave for the year, it would've gone out. And then after new fiscal year, you start over, you don't keep increasing the bank.
The bank would roll over, though, wouldn't it?
Not necessarily, you can set it up so you don't.
Well, I mean, the intent was to have it VA carryover from year to year, but it's a donated sick leave bank. People can choose to donate it, that was the intent or the spirit of the whole sick leave bank.
See, you have to count, you'd have to cap it, no matter whether it's termination or not, because you wouldn't wanna be ruining everything forward. You can have a million dollar bank if everybody didn't get sick and you kept rolling it forward. You have to have it capped, and, and, you know, a safe way to do it is you're budgeting it at the front of the year, just keep that in the bank. And if somebody had a catastrophic need that went beyond what their, their own days were available, and you, you could let them have the sick leave that's in the bank up to that I mean, I've seen other government organizations do that, I, I don't know.
What do you think, Kelly? I never thought about capping the sick leave bank.
No, I didn't think about capping it either. And, and again, the only, when I commented to you about the, um, the only time that it's gonna cost the county is if this person is sick for six months, and you gotta hire somebody to work for them while they're sick.
What you could do.
Then it's gonna cost you, otherwise, it's not gonna cost you, because you're just...
What you, what you could do...
You're paying them anyway.
You'd have to allocate a fund, you could roll it into a bank account like a CD that's only earmarked with the monies that you've accrued each year, and you could, you could save it, just like we do year-end funds. Um, you could, you could roll it forward into a, to a big bank if you really wanted to spend $3 million, and you got $3 million in the bank account, because it would, it would increase every year, it would have, it'd get more and more.
It could, it doesn't have to.
No, it could, only if people use it.
Right. So...
But you'd have to handle that as a separate way of handling the funds, so that you wouldn't spend that money on anything but that sick leave bank. And then you've already...
Yeah, and the only extraneous money would be dollars spent to hire somebody to cover.
And if you get to that point, you're into that FMLA and all, I mean, you're gonna have, you're gonna have to have a conversation about it anyway.
And we're setting up an insurance fund for sick leave.
Uh, the whole Family Medical Leave Act is probably getting ready to change here in 2020 legislative session, but, so I just wanted to kinda get the conversation started. We have a pressing question, are we gonna allow an employee getting ready to retire and donate hours to a sick bank? No, if we don't have a sick bank, that's not happening, because we don't have the, the mechanism in place to receive that. I know this is a sorry way to approach things.
Do we have it for leave? We do. If you don't take vacation during the year, you don't use it or lose it, right? Up to a point.
According to this document...
And then when you retire, you can, you get paid out whatever that money is for the...
Vacation.
Vacation, not sick, sorry, not sick leave.
And you can donate sick to other people.
Right.
We just don't have a sick bank.
Right.
Right.
Sick leave bank.
Sick leave does get paid out, as well as vacation time.
Yeah, sick leave.
Sick leave gets paid out at 160 hours capped, and vacation time's 272 hours capped. So we do pay those out. But if somebody had more than 160 days sick time, they wanna be able to donate that to a bank, or if they, for some reason, said, well, I don't even want to, I don't want you to pay me my 160 hours, I don't want to donate at all, I don't need the money, it's gonna kill me in tax, whatever, but at the maximum, we have to pay out 20 days. But at the maximum, we have to pay out 20 days, so. I suppose over time, this could end up having 1,000 or 5,000 hours in it.
It could.
You would hope the committee responsible to administer that fund would consider the financial impact on the county if they allowed.
That's why you'd have to bank it, every year you budget it, you spend it, you put that amount of money, if it's not spent into a bank account that you're. Only for sick leave.
Yeah, and really, that's probably a, an accountant question to see if we have to financially back those hours. Although, I'm, I don't know that it would be an automatic thing, because the county would have control of that, county has no control over if somebody's gonna retire. We have to have that money earmarked to be able to pay those benefits out, so.
And maybe you can see how it goes, and then decide if you want to cap it at a later time or something.
Other thoughts, gentlemen?
I like what Kelly just said, I mean, we did, for a long time, we gave longevity raises, and then we revisited after, we saw that it became onerous to the county, and I think during the sick leaves, and then at some point in the future, if it becomes a burden on the county, then we could address it at that time, so. Yeah, I'd probably put a cap on it.
Then you don't have to, then you're staying within your budget.
Yeah, just trying to look out, I think, yeah, I don't know, I can go, I'll find where they do it.
Or you roll it forward, because you are, you do have the money every fiscal year.
I do, I understand.
Moving into the bank.
I understand.
All right, so what are you gonna do, Tom?
Um, well, I'll call for more discussion and call for public comment and, sorry. First, we don't have a motion, but if we get a motion on the table, then that's the process, so.
The discussion, we've had to come back with a real motion that is accounting for the contusions.
The only refinement, uh, I think, the two questions right now are adding the word by application.
I did.
And then the second discussion was, oh, is this only for voluntary termination, voluntary termination as opposed to involuntary termination?
Correct, and that wording's in here.
And, and it was not in there, and I don't have a problem leaving it out of there, I guess, I brought that question up more of an educational thing to me, as to why was that omitted?
Right.
Okay, I mean, I wasn't saying, hey, get it all in there, that wasn't my point, my point was, I just didn't understand why that part was omitted from it.
Yeah, you know, when I worked at the school, they had a sick leave bank, and you could contribute to that monthly if you wanted to. This was geared more towards separation.
People leave it, and that's why I was saying, is it all separation or just voluntary separation?
I personally support voluntary separation.
I'm fine.
That's where I'm coming from.
Now, I have a big issue, I was just curious why that was.
So I added the words, um, in the, in the second sentence, the intent of the sick leave bank is to allow employees with extensive illness or traumatic injury to apply to the bank via an application for additional leave time.
I have problems with that. And then we could set up.
Uh, if you want to put a cap in here, we can.
By the word application.
Picking a number would be.
You're filling out a form is what you're doing, and you're donating.
Right.
Is it an application or?
Well, if you want to apply to get hours out of the bank, then you would fill out a.
If you wanted to.
Until yours is your personal sick lot, time is extinguished.
Right, that's correct, you have to, uh, have to utilize your sick leave and/or personal leave, you get two days personal leave, so.
And then he specifically donated to you, because we're still allowing specific donations.
Right. Uh, do, are we gonna need, we don't need a resolution to amend the personnel policy, I wouldn't think.
Um, might be better to do it by a resolution.
Okay.
You did the personnel policy by the resolution.
Oh, I think we did, yes.
Yeah, I think it was done by.
By a resolution. I thought my work was done.
No, your work's not done, just because Christmas is a little ways off.
So that means you need to go through a resolution.
So, I will, I'm gonna save and email this to you then, counsel, I would move that we draft, well, I made a change to it.
All right, okay, yeah.
I would move that we draft a resolution to include the proposed addendum to Chapter 7, Section 703.3. Point 1, although there's a better place to put this language in there, I believe, sir, we can address that later. Been moved and seconded, draft a resolution concerning an addendum for, an addendum to the personnel policy concerning a sick leave bank. Discussion, further discussion, public comment, hearing none, proceed to vote, all in favor say aye.
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 Pose nay, motion carries.
What's the next number for a resolution?
Uh, I believe it's, uh, probably 17.
That's what I, in my head, that's what I have as well.
You can always change it, if that's not right, I would send it to you, and we'll have it on, put it on the agenda for the 31st.
And then the last.
Uh, 19 would be the next one.
19.
The last paragraph, sir, on page 28 of the personnel policy, uh, 703.3, I, for my own notes, stuck in, I added to an established sick leave bank or two, then it goes on, another employee on an hour-for-hour basis. I'm not sure the hour-for-hour basis is relevant, but.
Isn't that already in there?
I added established sick leave bank or two. And then 703.3.1, we just have to add that paragraph in there. Does that make sense?
Uh, probably, we'll want to look at it.
Okay, all right, so you just make a note, um, last paragraph on page 28, I added established sick leave bank or two specifically.
Okay.
Uh, so we'll deal with that on the 31st as well.
Yeah, it's fine.
Consideration of resolution number.
Thank you, thank you.
Anything else come before the board before we go, uh, for our last public comment?
No, the only thing I have here, oh, for the, for the vote, you mean?
No, we voted, public comment, which we, I don't know, we have so many agendas, we may have to start timestamping these agendas, too.
I won't be going to the Christmas party.
Oh?
Kunkelman sent out a, just a note here, I mentioned, he did send out a request for a meeting on the Skype, he sent out, uh, it was on Monday, 2:00 P.M.
That's an email?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'll have to go through.
From Friday the 20th.
Um. I would move to adjourn.
I'll say it.
Moving to adjourn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay, motion carries, meeting adjourned, 12:03 P.M.